Good morning. Welcome to the, a, um, a special meeting of the Manatee County Planning Commission, Wednesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. If we would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect timing. May I remind everyone to please turn your cellphones off? Everybody reach for your wallets and purses and pockets and turn those cellphones off. Okay. Um, now we have announcements. Any changes, Ms. Greer and/or Ms. Schenk?
All updates were published yesterday afternoon.
No changes.
Okay. We have, we have minutes for January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, April eleventh, and, uh, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I have a motion to approve? We have a motion by Mr. Rutledge. Oh, that was movement, whatever. We have a motion as second vote. I'm, I'm just so used to doing everything by voice all these years that I just don't even look at this silliness. All right. At this point, we will open up a citizen comment portion of this hearing. Is there anyone to, would like to address the planning commission on items that are not on the agenda today? Again, items that are not on the agenda today. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close that public comment of that area. Um, we have, let's see, a couple of things on consent. We have, um, item number one, Ms. Greer, would you, actually, we need a swearing in. We're starting the quasi judicial portion of this, so let's have a swearing in. If you're thinking about talking today remotely possibly might get moved, the spirit might join you, please get up and get sworn in because you're gonna have to do it later.
Or if you can hear his voice.
Or if you can hear my voice. Thank you. I'll remind commissioners also to speak into the microphone as well as staff. Ms. Greer, if you would please read this into the record for us.
Item number one, P D R twenty-three forty-six G, Hidden Harbor Park. It's a Manatee County project. It's P L N twenty-three zero-seven zero-one-two-five, and it's quasi judicial. We have Rose, Rosina Leiter here for Manatee County, and it's approving a general development plan of approximately a hundred and ninety-point-eight-nine acres for a public park known as Hidden Harbor Park, and it's to include passive and low intensity, intensity recreational uses, multi-use buildings, and associated infrastructure. The site is known P D R and P D R C H H, and generally located two thousand five hundred feet south of Mulholland Road in the northeast quadrant of Fort Hamer Road and Manatee, and the Manatee River at sixteen-twenty-six Fort Hamer Road Parish.
Thank you. Are there any planning commissioners that would like this removed from the consent agenda?
It's not consent. It's presentations upon request, sir.
I'm sorry? Right. Okay. That's why I wondered if they wanted to, that was the request. Is there anyone that will open the public comment portion of this? Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Anyone in the public? Seeing no one come forward to close the public comment, chair will entertain a motion.
And Mr. Chair, disclose any ex parte communication.
Oh, I put it right on the top and I didn't do it. Has anyone had any ex parte communications on this item? Chair will entertain a motion. We have a motion by Ms. Prosser, seconded by Mr. Rutledge. All those in favor signify by saying, please register your vote. Close enough. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number two, Ms. Greer, would you please read this into the record?
P D C sixteen zero-four P R three Gateway Commons, Gateway Commons, Manatee LLC, P L N twenty-three zero-seven zero-one-one-three. It's quasi judicial. We have Chris Claypeck here for staff. It's amending and reinstating zoning ordinance number P D C sixteen zero-four P R, and amending the revised preliminary site plan. It's, one, increasing square footage of out parcel two, building one D from two thousand one hundred and sixty-three square feet to two thousand two hundred and forty-eight square feet; two, increasing square footage of out parcel three from three thousand three hundred and forty-nine square feet to a maximum of five thousand square feet; three, increasing square footage of the main strip retail building from twenty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-eight square feet to thirty-four thousand three hundred and forty-nine square feet; and four, increasing the eastern commercial out parcels from three out parcels to length forty-two thousand square feet, and retail and restaurant uses to a maximum of five out parcels consisting of four thousand four hundred square feet, car wash, two thousand four hundred square foot fast food restaurant, and a three-story, one hundred and five thousand nine hundred square foot three-story self-storage facility at a maximum of eleven thousand six hundred square feet of retail restaurant uses on the remaining two out parcels in the northeast corner of the site. The property is approximately thirty-three-point-one-two acres and is generally located at the south corner of Buffalo Road and Moccaswell Walla Road.
Thank you, Ms. Greer. Have any planning commissioners had any ex parte communications on this item? Mr. Rutledge.
I was previously engaged by this group and had a transaction on this particular site but on one of the seven sites. So, I'm not engaged with that.
Okay, there's no conflict then.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rutledge. This is a presentation upon request. Would any commissioners like this to be removed for a presentation? We will open the public comment of this portion of this project. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Anyone in the public to come forward and speak for or against this item. Seeing no one come forward, we will close public comment. Chair will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Delezline, seconded by Mr. Esslinger. You may vote now. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Item number three, we are now into the presentations. We are going to open three and four together. We will take motions on them separately at the end. So, we will open three and four together, take motions separately at the end. Ms. Greer, would you please read them both into the record?
Item number three, ordinance twenty-four sixty-seven, TARA D R I eleven, P L N twenty-three zero-two zero-zero-six-eight. It's quasi judicial. Laura Gonzalez is here for staff. It's approving an amendment and rest, restatement of a development order pursuant to chapter three hundred and eighty Florida statutes for the TARA Development of Regional Impact Development Order as amended. One, amending map H to recognize the conversion from square footage of commercial uses to allow up to seventy-two multifamily units on a total of five-point-nine-nine acres. That includes parcels three-dash-five and three-dash-Z and other minor updates to include previously granted legislative extensions, terminology changes, and departmental references, formatting clarification changes, and to denote stipulations that have been compiled with or requirements that have been completed, codifying and reinstating the existing development order for D R I number eleven, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. The TARA D R I is located at the southeast corner of State Road seventy and I seventy-five, extending westward to Brayden River Road, Manatee County, and is approximately one thousand one hundred and twenty-four acres. The TARA D R I is currently approved for two thousand seven hundred and nineteen residential development units, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-one square feet for commercial office, adult assisted living facility, mini warehouse space, thirty-six hole golf course, hotel, two clubhouses, and two maintenance centers. Total acreage is one thousand one hundred and twenty-four acres. The site is in the R O R and P S P one future land use categories. Present zoning is P D C W P dash E S T. And it's in the, uh, which stands for the planned development, commercial, Evers Reservoir Watershed Protection Special Treatment Overlay Districts.
Thank you. Have any commissioners had any ex parte communications on item number three or item number four?
I still need to read four into the record.
I'm sorry? Well, I thought, yeah, but I thought you were done the way you were pausing.
Okay, so a summary over, number four, P D R, P D C, P D M U, ninety-six oh-three Z G, R thirteen, is TARA amended general development plan, um, for basically everything that was.
Just say rezone to P D C.
And a rezone to P D C.
From P D C to P D M U.
Okay. Approving an amendment to the zoning ordinance and general development plan, one, to rezone from P D C to P D M U on approximately five-point-nine-nine acres. That includes parcels that were previously noted, and, two, to amend the general development plan, exhibit B, and the zoning ordinance to allow the multifamily use up to seventy-two uses and uses permitted on the schedule of permitted and prohibited uses.
Thank you, Ms. Greer. Okay. We have the applicant, I believe. Morning, Mr. Rudisil.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners.
All right. For the record, my name's Scott Rudisil, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and I have been sworn. All right, this is our project team. We have Matt Bennett, John Woodman, and Mike King, all with Silver Homes by Town. Uh, and we have Margaret Tusing here. She's our land use planner on the project with, with Z N S. All right, this is the project site. It may look familiar to some of you. We were here in September of last year. Um, at that time, the applicant was proposing a hundred and fifty-six units on seven and a half acres, was asking to increase the allowable height within the TARA D R I from three stories to four stories. And so, that previous application, if you look at the little carve-out that has a building on it there, that's the goodwill site that was previously included. It is no longer, um, part of the request. Um, at that time, the, we had a tie vote at the planning commission on that, on that project with the concern that was stated, um, by the votes in opposition being the height. Um, and that project never went to the board. We are back now with a request for seventy-two units, so less than half of the number of units requested previously, um, on approximately six acres. We're asking for no additional height, and we're asking for no changes to any of the development standards in the TARA D R I. Um, so essentially, this request encompasses a rezone to P D M U, but otherwise, it's minor cleanup items to the D R I and to the zoning ordinance. Just for additional background, this is your future land use map. It was, was mentioned. This site is R O R, which is one of your most intense future land use categories in the county, and then part of the site is P S P one where there's a utility easement that runs through the project. And here's your existing P D C zoning for the site. And we talked about this last time, but when the TARA D R I, um, was originally approved back in nineteen eighty, P D M U zoning did not exist at that time. Otherwise, this entire D R I project would have been zoned P D M U. If it came forward today, it would be zoned P D M U. It would have to be. Um, and so, we are requesting to rezone this parcel to P D M U to clean that up because there is a land use matrix that allows for conversion to either residential or commercial on the site. And then this is, uh, this shows you where the project is located on map H on the G D P. Um, this is just a little cutout, but it is, uh, right there at the, at the entrance to TARA. Again, um, for those who weren't here the first time, uh, there's a land use equivalency matrix within this D R I, allows for conversion, commercial to residential, vice versa, and it specifies the parcels that can be used for that conversion. The two parcels included in this application are two of the parcels that are listed that are allowed to use that equivalency matrix and allowed to use it administratively. So, under the existing D R I ordinance and zoning ordinance, the land use matrix on these two parcels can be used administratively. It doesn't require us to come back to the board. And so, what's being requested here is to convert, uh, twenty-eight thousand square feet of commercial into those seventy-two, uh, multifamily units under that existing equivalency matrix. These are the existing standards within the TARA D R I for multifamily development. We're going to comply with all of those standards. And this is just a picture of the equivalency matrix showing what we would use, um, to make that conversion. And so, that concludes our presentation. We're, we're requesting your recommendation of approval. Uh, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Rudisil. Any questions for the applicant at this point?
I do have one. Um, so, I worked on the power easement up by the Walmart up there, and we got rights to park and pave and do all kinds of things. Is that the intent here as well, or are you just gonna be, have that as a neighbor?
Uh, I think it is intended to just be open spaces, my understanding. Yes, they've, they've designed around that, that easement area.
Okay. And so, you'll take into account whatever the water conditions are for that into yours, and, uh, the reduction in the number of units is disproportionately lower despite removing the, the out parcel that is goodwill, right?
Much lower density, yes.
And height, you match?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else for the applicant at this point? Thank you. Staff presentation?
Good morning. Laura Gonzalez with Development Services Department, and I have been sworn. Uh, the applicant has presented a complete overview of their proposal, so I was, I will just emphasize some of the few, uh, few key aspects. Um, okay. The proposed P D M U zoning district is consistent with the nature, nature of the TARA D R I that allows a mix of development of users, residential, commercial, hotel, residential support uses, and mini warehouses. The P D M U will also allow the development of option A for residential uses and option B for commercial. This is map H that shows the distribution of the approved uses and the entitlements throughout the whole D R I, and the revised map H shows the subject size, parcel three B and three C with the option B, uh, the number of multifamily, sorry, option A with the number of multifamily units that is allowed with a total of seventy-two, and option B for the commercial entitlements. Option A for residential uses is achieved through the conversion of the commercial entitlements using the land use equivalency matrix that has been approved, and the commercial uses are originally approved for these parcels. Let's go to the positive and negative aspect. Uh, there are no changes to the dimensional standards, um, positive aspects. Um, the option A for multifamily represents an appropriate transition between the commercial uses to the north and the single-family residential uses to the south. Based on the traffic study, the proposed number of multifamily units in option A is equivalent in terms of trip generation to the current commercial entitlements vested by the D R I, and as such, transportation concurrency is met. Uh, the proposed changes will not affect negatively the demand for school, recreational areas, or other public facilities and services. And the revised project does not require changes to the development standards of the ordinance, maintaining the maximum height for multifamily, and no specific approval has been requested. Negative aspect, the multifamily building may generate negative impacts related to light and noise on the single-family residential uses to the south, and as a mitigating measure, the existing cover trees and the required buffer plantings will mitigate any perceived negative impact of the multifamily development. In addition, the project shall comply with section, uh, eight oh-six outdoor lighting that has, uh, requirements to, to limit the illumination spill over the residential areas. With the proposed stipulation, staff find the request to be consistent with the policy of the comprehensive plan and the applicable requirements of the Land Development Code. Uh, compliance with these requirements and all applicable standards of the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan will be reviewed in detail at time of the preliminary site plan and final site plan. Any question?
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff at this point? Um, tree replacement fund, they'll either be required to replace trees and/or pay into the tree fund, correct?
Yes. Um, yes.
All right. Any other questions for staff at this point?
Thank you.
I have the list. I'm just gonna go the first names if you don't mind. I'm sure you know each other. Kathy, would you like to come forward and start the party for us? After Kathy is Deb, I believe.
Mr. Chair, you have to read the whole names for the record.
Well, aren't they gonna state their name or whether or not they've been sworn?
I think we should really say the whole name.
Kathy Ludely?
Woolley.
Woolley. See, she's gonna say it anyway. Kathy Woolley. Please come forward, state your name, whether or not you've been sworn in your county of residence.
Let's see. Uh, okay. Good morning. My name is Kathy Woolley. I'm a Manatee County resident, and I have been sworn. The first development order for TARA was signed and executed in nineteen eighty. That's over forty years ago. TARA was then eleven hundred and twenty-four acres of wet cattle grazing land, and you've seen where we're located. We're west of I seventy-five and just south of State Road seventy. TARA is one of this county's first DRIs. We're D R I or Development of Regional, um, Impact Number Eleven. Along with Palm Air and University Park, we remain one of the county's largest residential associations. We used to be considered in the hinterlands, out east. No, no longer. TARA is a middle-class community consisting of flats, villas, duplexes, four- and six-plex condominiums, and single-family homes. Our master-planned community was designed with all residential properties either south of Stone River Road or west of TARA Boulevard. This was to allow for a modest sixty-six-acre neighborhood services area on the northeast corner of TARA Boulevard and State Road seventy. That has been the TARA plan since the beginning. Now, we don't want you to think we're opposed to change. TARA has managed plenty of change with ten ordinance revisions, and I'd like to speak to you today about just one. In two thousand and ten, the developer proposed a drugstore on the west side of TARA Boulevard at the heavily trafficked main entrance right on State Road seventy across the C V S. This proposal was controversial and resulted in litigation due to the commission's partial denial. During continued hearings, TARA presented the county with two nineteen ninety-eight letters from the developer's own attorney. Those letters stated that the developer had unequivocally yielded all rights to build on the west side. on the west side on environmentally sensitive land, and in return, the county commission granted the developer an extra 75,000 square feet of new entitlements within the TARA East Side Neighborhood Services Area. The commission wanted to be sure there was enough square footage over there. It was at those same hearings that the commission first approved TARA's loom. That's our land use equivalency matrix. And that loom has resulted in a number of rezonings that have significantly impacted TARA's Neighborhood Services Area. TARA has gone from one approved hotel at 79 rooms, and if you look up on the staff report, you'll see it's still listed as 79 rooms, to three hotels. Okay? And we have now almost 200 hotel rooms in our small Neighborhood Services Area. They're all built, but they also, also have been built, have been 123 room senior living facility plus a 50-plus room assisted living facility. TARA opposed none of those. I'll say that again. TARA opposed none of those, or that cumulative loss of commercial area, or the contiguous addition of all that non-owned residential. All the residential's property in TARA is owned. This was all non-owned. Now there are nearly 400-plus residential rooms in TARA's Neighborhood Services Area. So you wonder why we're here today? To strongly oppose the latest zoning application. And that stack right there are the emails that the county has already received from my neighbors in opposition of this project and their neighbors who can't be here today. The revised application is for 72 rental apartments that are tightly squeezed into three buildings on 4.14 buildable acres with over 150 parking spaces. This change provides no value to TARA's Neighborhood Services Area, nor does it reflect any portion of our master plan. The biggest problems are that the use, the density, the timing at 40 years, and that location are not compatible with TARA as a whole or as it has long been planned. The Neighborhood Service Area was and is still intended to be and to provide significant value to TARA owners to enhance and extend their quality of life. The service areas is actually to entice TARA residents and maybe future buyers to choose TARA and to remain internal to the DRI. You all remember that a DRI is a big box facing inward. TARA, to remain internal to the DRI, and as a golf cart community by Manatee County ordinance, TARA offers aging-in-place. This is due to the service area's proximity. Owners don't have to go out on State Road 70 for any of their daily essentials. Residents can buy groceries, pick up prescriptions, eat in a restaurant, get a haircut, buy gas, even bank right within TARA, and they can do it all by walking or golf cart. Now sadly, the FDOT reminds us in the local newspaper that TARA is located next to the worst traffic area in two counties. You're going to hear more from others about that headline-grabbing congestion. State Road 70 is an FDOT roadway, and the speeds are about 50 miles an hour at our intersection. A risky traffic situation that our MPO states the county cannot build its way out of. And worst of all is that the FDOT has no further foreseeable improvement plans. You look out a decade, they may widen the road up on the highway, but they're doing nothing on State Road 70. And as all of you may not know, TARA's roads are county-owned. Yes, all TARA homeowners voluntarily assess themselves, voluntarily assess themselves to invest in extensive roadway landscaping. Unlike the county's new West Side median beautification program, TARA's lush median has been self-funded and in place for 30 years. That program has saved the county several million dollars of landscaping costs. TARA has invested in underground irrigation, several expensive wells, the trimming of tall oaks and palm trees, and otherwise maintaining and improving the community's 8,000 linear-foot wall and the adjacent lighting, all for appearance and safety and not at the expense of the county. To close, don't the current TARA property owners have their own longstanding property rights? And after 40 years, shouldn't county zoning offer some expectation of continuity? Property rights and reasonable expectations do not only belong to those who start with a vacant parcel. The commission seemed to recognize that at their recent IMG and Elwood Park hearings, where similar lack of compatibility issues were discussed. This county should never approve rezoning and/or subsequent uses of vacant parcels that either significantly diminish the existing property values of nearby homes or the quality of life of the adjacent community residents. We ask you again, please just stick with the plan. And that's what that says in case the platins not on. Just stick with the 40-year plan. We ask no change. Rezoning was not and is not a guarantee. Use of a loom, the land use matrix, was not and is not a guarantee. The plan has to fit with the rest of the area around it. Somebody said it's good for, because it's contiguous. Well, it goes from single-family homes to an apartment building to the goodwill. There's no continuity across that plane. The owner purchased the property knowing it was zoned commercial and that rental apartments were not an approved use. This is the wrong place for this apartment complex because of the lack of compatibility, the 17-unit-per-acre density adjacent to a community which can't be more than a few hundred feet away that has two units per acre. The location, the first real development of that Neighborhood Services Area that is totally visible, totally visible to the neighbors, even with trees, it won't be able to be screened because it's two stories, three stories plus. And the timing, 40 years out, don't we have any expectation? People bought here understanding exactly how the land could be used. It couldn't be used for PM, not because PMU wasn't around then. It's because the county rezoned it from residential to commercial when they discovered it was mistakenly miszoned. There's no PM use here. There's no idea if you've done it, rezoned at PMU, exactly what will get built here, even though the ordinance has information to help us understand what they intend to build. There'll be no limitation on what does get built. 40 years is too long to wait for this change. My community stands strongly against this application, and any approval of this request is going to add vehicles to the already very stressed internal traffic. The traffic going out TARA Boulevard to State Road 70, east or west, is constantly backed up down past the only signalized, the only signalized intersection in TARA. And that corner, as you come down, poses a constant backup of traffic. And these 150 cars will have to use the least functional part of the road. Any approval of this request will add vehicles to the internal traffic and to the State Road 70 debacle. It's a breach of faith with TARA, and it creates an unreasonable increase in risk. Please just stick to the community's 40-year plan and unanimously deny this damaging rezoning application. And thank you for your attention. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Deb M., but I don't know who M. is. So applauding, that's, okay, just so you know, that's, that's definitely something that you want to not do. Okay? Because then it influences decisions, then it makes the applicant able to come back and go in the court of law and go across the street. So I would suggest that you don't do those things either here or at the board meeting. So I don't know what M.'s last name is.
Mazzafaro.
So I'm sorry, Ms. Schenk, but I can't say it.
Yeah, I think we, we.
Please state your name, whether or not you've been sworn in your county of residence.
Deb Mazzafaro. I'm a Manatee County resident, and I've been sworn. So I moved here in 1987. Unlike what happens today where people come down and rent for a year or two before they figure out where they want to live, I flew in with my husband, we bought a house, went home, packed up, and moved ourselves into Manatee County. At the time, I had a Sarasota mailing address, and I used to tell everybody that, you know, even though I have this Sarasota mailing, mailing address, I'm really happy to be a Manatee County resident because the commissioners and administration in Manatee County really know how to plan ahead and manage the infrastructure correctly, whereas, you know, Sarasota County's, let's just say, not as well-managed. As soon as TARA was built, we would come out to the country club for Sunday brunch. If you've never been, it's pretty well-known to, for its brunch since 1990. And I've had the good fortune since I took up golf about 25 years ago to be able to play golf at, at TARA. So I, I sold my big house on the water, moved to St. Pete in a condo, and then I moved back to Manatee County and decided I finally had to get off the water. And I didn't look anywhere except TARA. Okay? I knew the community. I felt like it was already completely developed, and it was where I was comfortable being. That was in February of 2023, so I've been there 14 or 15 months. And I've gotten very involved in the, in the community. I'm the landscape committee, and I'm also on the TARA Master Association. There we go. So this is my property. The subject property is where that red arrow is, and my property is the circled property. So I'm one of those people that's going to be impacted the most. One of the reasons I wanted you to see this particular picture is because you can see that Drewey's Bluff is a winding road. It's a residential street through, not a through street, right? And then the perpendicular street is Stone River Road, and that also winds quite a bit through the community and towards the, towards the commercial area. I'm going to show you some more pictures because even though the, I have great respect for the staff, and they've been very responsive with our questions, nothing is going to speak to you like actually being there. So this is where the entry would be on this two-lane road that has a sidewalk on one side and not on the other. To my right here would be the residential, beginning of the residential housing and the through-street Drewey's Bluff. This is another picture. This one is from Drewey's Bluff, where I would come out onto Stone River Road. You can see it's a two-lane highway or two-lane county road. Where that signage is, is where the entry to the apartments would be. The other spots are on my left. That's where the light is. It's not very far away. I got another picture of that for you. And down Stone River Road. So you can see this, it's a country road. This is the other end of Drewey's Bluff. So if somebody came out of the apartments, drove through my street, winding street, and ended up at the other end to get on TARA Boulevard, this is where that street would let them out. There's no stop sign there. There's no light there. It's a 30 mile an hour, TARA Boulevard, it's 30 mile an hour, but it's regularly, people are clocked at 45 plus. And this particular morning, when I was out for my walk, there was a dead ibis there. Now, those ibises know how to get out of the way. That person had to be going 50 miles an hour. One of the things, I read the whole staff report. One of the things that the staff report says is that R6 is already in our community. And I thought about that, and it must be this particular condo, which is the terraces. They're three-story buildings. It's the only property within our DRI. Their owner occupied. But here's, I'm standing, taking these pictures from a single-family home driveway, okay? At the edge. So you have the street, then you have this very wide entryway, and then you have another 50 feet before you get to the apartments condos. And then on the other side of the condos is the golf course. So that's what a three-story entryway egress looks like. So R6 is not a logical transition, as Kathy said earlier. It's a, you have a one-story bookstore, and then you have one-story single-family homes, and then you have this three-story in-between. The, the staff report states that the average density in, in TARA is 2.4 per acre, not six. Apartments are just not compatible with what we currently have there, and this property is not considered infill. Infill is all designated east of US 301. There's a picture of the infill. So we respectfully ask you to vote no to this change, and tomorrow morning I have a TARA Master Association board meeting. I'm looking forward to telling them that you voted against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Brian Clark. Please state your name, whether or not you've been sworn in your county of residence.
Good morning. My name is Brian Clark. I'm a resident of Manatee County, and I've been sworn. I've been coming down to Manatee County for many, many years because my 86-year-old mother-in-law is a resident here also. And my wife and I bought property in TARA two years ago because we felt it had been characterized by its unique charm, local identity, and strong sense of community. In fact, the neighborhood has experienced significant amount of traffic congestion in the last several years, and I share today with most of my neighbors, some of which here are present, a deep concern about the location and scope of the, of the present project before you. It's no, it's no secret that State Route 70 between I-75, just past the TARA intersection, is the busiest highway in both Manatee and Sarasota Counties. In fact, there on 21st of July of last year, there was a big article in the Sarasota Herald Tribune bringing this to everyone's attention. The volumes on this segment, on this segment of State Route 70 has increased 24% in the last two years. TARA Boulevard, which I thought was just known to be for use of, of the residents, has now become a thoroughfare between Linger Lodge Road and State Route 70. During my tenure in the TARA development, there's been fatalities on this road. And even on Monday of this week, I witnessed a cyclist being knocked off a bicycle by an SUV and response by four emergency services vehicles. The road's getting a lot more use now than ever before. You've heard where this development is going to take place, on the corner of TARA and Stone River. Back in 2010, the, the planning commission was fully aware that a lot of traffic goes southbound on TARA Boulevard and tries to make a U-turn at Stone River Road, and there was some consideration to widening this property. In a document listed as June the 25th, 2010, from the Manatee County Planning Department, "The existing geometrics of the north leg of the intersection of TARA Boulevard and Stone River Road will not allow U-turns for vehicles larger than a compact automobile." We've often seen recently where SUVs, small trucks, and even some larger trucks trying to make U-turns at that, at that juncture, end up going up on the curb or even going up on the sidewalk. This is obviously a community where a lot of people go walking. I myself walk a couple of miles every morning. Lot of people walk this community. Lot of people walk to the stores, and, and it's getting more and more difficult from, from, from month to month. So I, I think that if, if you've got a problem, you've So I, I think that if, if you've got a problem, you've got a blazing inferno, you don't correct it by adding more fuel to the fire. And I think that adding another 150 vehicles potentially to this overpopulated, overtrafficked area is, is not really desirable. State Route 70's segment at Tara Boulevard is operating above level service F, which is defined as forced traffic flow in which the volume of traffic approaching the intersection exceeds the capacity that can be served. There's been multiple accidents on, on, at this juncture, and some mornings, particularly at peak times, I've sat trying to get out onto State Road 7, State Route 70 myself, where it's taken two or sometimes three sets of rotations of traffic signals before you can get out onto the road. That's with existing traffic conditions. Adding another potentially 150 vehicles is going to make this considerably worse. You've also heard that there's been no improvements planned in the next five years by the Florida Department of Transportation or Manatee County to address this situation between State Route 70 and the Tara Boulevard intersection. Situation is dire right now, and it's, it's getting worse by the month. So I would respectfully ask this board to deny this application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person I have signed up is John Leoni, or Leon?
Leon.
Leon. John Leon. Please come forward. State your name, whether or not you've been sworn, and your county of residence.
I'm John Leon. I have been sworn. I am a resident of Tara for 25 years. I have one visual that I want to have everybody see. It's rather large, so you can't put it up on a scope. It's the original map H, if you will. It's the Lombardo and Schippers, Skipper's rendition of our DRI, and it was done in 95, recorded in 95. The reason I'm showing it to you, and if you want to spin around, let the audience see it also, is that what you see on that rendition is Tara as it stood then. There is no CDD. There is no Tara Preserve. There is limited use beyond Phase 1 Tara. The reason I bring that out is because I'm talking about stormwater management now. That's one of my pet situations and one of my involvements. I'm involved with the Master Association. I was vice president and president of it. And if you look at this Tara, it's a giant sponge, absorbing the stormwater that falls on Tara and collecting it and keeping it where it is, which is one of the mandates that we have. In 1985, there was stormwater management system put into place, and it was adequate for the time. Well, by the time we get to where we are now in this development that we have, things have changed. We've paved over a good part of the area that this DRI is in. We've paved over and developed on the creation of the CDD, which is CDD number one, by the way, in Manatee County. And there are 2,000 homes now in that situation. We've also developed on the commercial area and had various development plans around. State Route 70, which was a two-lane road then, is now, it's five or six lanes wide at the junction of Tara Boulevard. Everything points to this simple fact. We have a stormwater management system that gears for 25-year storms and was fine in 1985. What was fine in 1985 is no longer fine. None of us here wear the clothing we wore in 1985 or drive the cars we drove in 1985. Things have changed. Things have improved. We unfortunately have been the beneficiaries of water sheeting into our area from all over the adjoining areas. We have the addition of hardening surfaces and water no longer being sponged up by the soil underneath it. We don't have the open spaces that we had before. And what is happening now is someone is asking that they take a piece of the open space in the most critical area, as far as I am concerned, and going to, one, build on it, pave it over, and put people on top of that. In an earlier meeting we had about this development process, I brought up at a meeting, well, what about Nonsense Creek? And the person on the other side of the table basically said, he didn't know what Nonsense Creek was. He said, oh, you mean the ditch? Well, Nonsense Creek, if you live in Tara, you understand, begins near State Road 70 and flows south. It flows into, through the commercial district. Where this development is, it is a ditch for a good part of the year, otherwise, depending upon, it's very dry right now. When it rains, it grows. But when it goes south, it grows also. And when it grows, it moves into the control area, as far as stormwater management, of the Master Association. And we maintain it, we clean it, and we move it on. It also then moves into the control area of the CDD, at which point then it again grows. When it rains hard, it grows. It eventually travels through into the communities. It floods yards. It floods properties. And at times, when it crosses over into the property of Tara Elementary School under Linger Lodge Road, it could be a raging torrent, and then it goes into Evers Reservoir. Along with that situation, the water situation that, with the sheeting and the, and the growing inability to drain, we talked about 3BB before, for example, it's a wetland that the county now owns on the other side of Tara Boulevard. That water moving to the west has now gotten into a situation where you have inundations of water and heavy rain situations in Fairway Gardens too. Fairway Gardens at Tara, and plantations at Tara Community that in fact affects the eyes of people, backyards, the, the properties and the properties themselves. And that's all the, the result of the increasing inability to use the water that falls into the area. The other aspect that I want to remind you of is in 2017, we had what was considered a 100-year storm or 500-year storm. Cars were floating on Tara Boulevard. That was unusual. But 25-year storms are becoming less the fashion, and bigger storms are becoming a reality. And, you know, we have to look at that situation. As far as flooding is concerned, I have a lot of experience with flooding. I also have a home at the Jersey Shore, and you all remember 2012, Sandy. I had two and a half feet of water in my living room. So I understand flooding, and I see it as a growing problem, and we, the Master Association, has stormwater management responsibility for Phase 1 Tara. The CDD has stormwater management responsibility for their phase, and the commercial area has responsibility there. What they're planning to do is pave over a sponge, one of the last remaining sponges in the area, and then put people on top of it. I don't necessarily think that's prudent. And the other thing is, one of the remedies for this inability to deal with it is to be able to buy storm or wetlands mitigation in other places and pay money, and that takes care of it. Well, it doesn't take care of it, it doesn't take the wetlands that we have and make them more properly serving the needs that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Denise Smauk. Please state your name, whether or not you've been sworn, and your county of residence. We'll need to keep that.
No, I don't.
We need to keep that.
We'll get you a copy, though.
You'll make sure that you... Yeah, just to be clear, that can't leave the chambers. That has to stay with us. It was shown, right? Yes. That piece of paper has to stay here. It'll be available for you at the board hearing, but it has to stay here.
Can you get the picture of it?
You can do whatever you'd like, but it has to stay here.
I'll get a printmaking. I'll get a printmaking.
There you go. All right. Please state your name, your county of residence, and whether or not you've been sworn.
Good morning. I'm Denise Mark, Manatee County resident, and I have been sworn in. I have owned in Manatee County for close to 15 years and am living in my second Tara property, which is a single-family home. We started out in a condo in Tara's Fairway Gardens, located right off of State Road 70. In the early years, we were very comfortable there, but as the Bradenton community grew, so did the traffic, and so did the road noise. That noise helped us make our decision to move further into the Tara community to a quieter location, which allowed us continued easy connectivity with the friends that we had developed over the years. Within Tara, we are a very social, mobile community. Whether it's driving your golf cart over to the golf course or to the grocery store, walking one of our two, three, or four-mile routes around the Tara complex identified by our fitness committee, running or riding your bike over to the pickleball courts where the community gathers to compete, we are mobile. And our mobility far surpasses just the use of cars as we strive to be a healthy, active community. We are also a proud and responsible community. We make every effort to and pay to have Tara Boulevard from State Road 70 to Linger Lodge maintained, landscaped, manicured, to keep this area of our neighborhood beautiful for all of us to enjoy. We even invested in the bank property recently and paid to enhance their landscaping to ensure that the, the beautification of the boulevard was maintained. Now, why am I telling you about our non-vehicular mobility and neighborhood appearance? Well, because what is being proposed today will endanger our ability to continue to be a healthy, active, and mobile neighborhood. Across the country, the trend is to keep people as active as possible to enhance longevity, excuse me, and quality of life. This proposal reduces our mobility and endangers our safety. This proposal adds potentially another 150 vehicles to our quiet, neighborhood-sized streets. Do you commissioners want more than 150 cars driving through your neighborhood every day? Do you want your ability to walk in current low-traffic, high-safety neighborhoods compromised? I suspect not. So the question I want each of you to ask yourselves when you go to vote on this is, would you approve this facility build in your own neighborhood? I suspect and hope the answer will be no. Help us keep our older community an active, healthy, mobile community by ensuring the safety of those that travel up and down Tara Boulevard on a daily basis by golf cart, bicycle, running, or walking. Help keep your county residents healthy by encouraging controlled growth that does not impede residents' ability to be active in their own neighborhood. I know this is important to you, or you would not have installed the speed humps on south, the south end of Tara Boulevard to slow vehicular traffic, making it safer for our runners, our walkers, and our bicyclists, which unfortunately, as you heard Brian state earlier today, is not, not helping completely because we did just have a bicyclist hit by a car. This ill-conceived traffic flow design forces up to 150 more vehicles onto our residential side streets and boulevard. This design will cause traffic backups every morning and every evening on the neighborhood side street as well as on Tara Boulevard because this area cannot handle that volume of increased traffic. Additionally, please consider the aesthetic change you are making to Tara Boulevard with this design. This design shows air conditioning and electrical units for this new build will be facing Tara Boulevard instead of being hidden someplace within the complex. And this look is not consistent with our strategic neighborhood appearance. Is that complex going to help finance and maintain the boulevard appearance? I suspect not. Are they going to ensure that whatever is visible from the street on their portion of the boulevard is aesthetically in line with the remaining boulevard look and feel that we currently maintain for you? Or maybe the county plans to maintain this area going forward? But I assure you, we will not if you force this upon us. While you are helping to make the Lakewood Ranch and other newer neighborhoods beautiful, you are working against one of the oldest communities in your county that is also trying to maintain high aesthetic landscape standards, as well as maintain our property values because of the look and feel we currently portray. Why is this proposal not introducing a development that complements and enhances the community in which it chooses to grow? Why is this proposal not looking at bringing in single-family homes that complement what is already here? Or possibly build a single-story facility that would allow us to continue to be a non-vehicular mobile community, like adding neighborhood services such as dog groomings, hair salons, or small retail shops? This type of strategic growth ensures a healthy community that doesn't need to travel far for services and add to the already congested roads that exist in this county due to previous non-strategic development. Again, I ask, would you vote for such a facility with this amount of traffic to be built in your own neighborhood and impact you as you are looking to impact us? Please help keep us in Manatee County and don't drive us out. Please vote no and make a long-term strategic decision today focused on controlled, reasonable, and manageable growth that enhances our current community, one which the neighborhood would embrace, support, and value. Again, please vote no, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next person I have is Mike Kiaznoff? Kiaznoff? Ki... Please come forward, state your name, and whether or not you've been sworn, your county
Good morning. Blinding Commissioners, Staff, and County Attorney. My name is Mike Krasznoff. I've been a Tara resident for six years, and I'm very proud of this community in which we live. Thank you for allowing us to speak against this proposed change to the Tara DRI.
Hi.
I'm sorry?
I've been sworn.
Yes, I've been sworn. Sorry about that. My neighbors have eloquently and passionately presented many reasons to stop this project from moving forward. To summarize, the issue of building new apartments within the Tara DRI property has again reared its unwelcome head. While the developer has altered the height and the number of apartments to be built, they have also reduced the buildable land area to 4.14 acres, which results in a density level of almost 18 units per acre, which is far too high to be considered a transition from much, the much lower density in Ashley Oaks or most any other area in Tara. While the developer has amended his original plan by reducing the number of units and their height, the severe problems of density, environment, traffic, and governance issues are still the same. How, how would this extra traffic generated from 100-plus potential renters, their estimated 140 cars plus service vehicles, be accommodated? All traffic must travel on Tara Boulevard and Stone River Road. Stone River Road is, again, a narrow, two-lane street. There is no easy way to use 50, sorry, 55th Street as originally planned. No more sensible way to go west. No improvement to the DRI. Nothing submitted improves our community, nor does it add any value to the DRI. Land Development Code Section 402.6. D addresses compat- Land Development Code Section 402.6. D addresses compatibility and states, quote, "Planned development districts shall be located and designed so as to minimize the negative effects of external impacts resulting from factors such as traffic, noise, or lights." Simply put, this project is not compatible with the Terra DRI. Since our last meeting, the commissioners have approved a development of 99 new town homes to be built around Braden Woods at Linger Lodge. The traffic flow on Terra Boulevard will only get worse. Terra Boulevard could become a parking lot with cars backed up at the traffic lights at Terra Boulevard and Stone River Road and the light at the intersection of Terra Boulevard and State Route 70. This intersection remains a true hazard and will surely become worse. The county has no fix for the current problem, so why create more problems by allowing these additional apartments to be built? On page 17, Item E2, the staff report states, quote, "Based on the data analysis and the findings presented within this traffic impact statement submitted by the applicant and approved by the staff, the multifamily project at 72 units was found to be trip equivalent to the current entitlements of 15,860 square feet of commercial land, land used to the two parcels, which are vested by the DRI, and as such, transportation controversy is met." Well, whose data is being used for this study? When was the data accumulated? Does this data or study consider the 99 new townhomes that are going to be built? Probably not. Approving the rezone application makes no common sense at all and puts the lives of Terra residents and all those traveling State Route 70 at risk. How does this new plan alleviate the problem when heavy rainfall floods the Terra Boulevard Stone River Road intersection? It doesn't. Building these developments will only make it worse. Why can't the developer or all future developers, using rezoning applications for the DRI or planned developments, supply a detailed general site plan so all parties better know what is exactly to be built and what the setbacks might look like? We do not believe that best decision could be made based on the limited information submitted. The landowner bought these parcels knowing they were zoned commercial, knowing they were intended to provide internal neighborhood services to the 3,500 residents of Terra. The 12 Oaks Plaza land area was specifically designated for neighborhood services, but with all the excess traffic committed, additional problems are certainly to exist. Would a golf cart be safe? What about pedestrians? Also, since 2010, the LUEM has permitted many other unexpected residential users on parcels that were rezoned. The rezoning eliminated commercial uses that could have served the Terra residents. Those rezoning decisions have deleted the commercial entitlements and have added approximately 400 residential units to the Terra DRI. On page 16 of the staff report, it is stated, "The proposed change will not adversely impact the demand for schools, recreational vehicles, and other public facilities and services." With 99 new townhomes that have already been approved, it is most unrealistic to say these changes will not adversely affect the Terra community. There will be too much additional traffic, more stress on our schools, more stress on our environment, and our daily lives. Finally, I am leaving you with 1,200 petitions signed by Terra owners who oppose this plan for many reasons that we have discussed. Please review them, and you will see how fast the opposition is to this project. Section 402.6E of the Land Development Code addresses transitions and states, quote, "Planned development districts shall be responsive to the character of the area," end quote. As you can plainly see from our presentations, this project is not compatible with the Terra community. Please protect the existing landowners. Please protect our rights. Please protect us, the residents of Terra, who brave State Route 70 every day. Please deny this zoning application. No one is guaranteed the right to rezone. Again, I thank you for your time and your consideration and allowing us to present our viewpoints.
Thank you. Next, I have Doug Zimmerman, I believe. And I think we've gotten a copy of that. Make sure the gentleman gets his copy back at some point. Doug Zimmerman, please state your name, your county residence, and whether or not you've been sworn.
Good morning, my name is Doug Zimmerman. I'm a Manatee County resident, and I've been sworn. Over the past six months or more, our community have shown its opposition to this project by over 1,200 signatures on a petition and over 1,500 letters and emails that have been sent to the planning commission and the county commissioners. Even though the out-of-town developer has changed the scope of this project, the message from our community remains the same: Just say no. When Terra was developed over 40 years ago, zoning was put in place by Manatee County and the original Terra developer with additional declarations for our community, which include standards that make Terra different from a no-sustained other housing development. This piece of property lies at the entrance to Terra, and it's the face of Terra, and Terra shows it off when you bring people to the community because Terra is right at I-75. You want to show Terra because it's a nice place. Unfortunately, the original developer and declarations, the ones that we have to live by, don't apply to this piece of property. The applicant wants to build something that is totally inconsistent with our community on this property, both in use and density, and that's a problem. The zoning approved by the county decades ago was akin to a promise to the residents of Terra that the community would be built according to the master plan even if the developer changed or went out of business. It's the only protection that we have now, and I'm thankful that it's there. The changes being requested now, if approved, will change the feel and character of our property and our community forever. That's a long time. I'm 59 years old. I'm just starting my journey in Terra. My mother's 91, and we own the properties directly across the street from this, two of them. So, I have to deal with it on a daily basis and show to she. To have the rules of the game changed after 40 years is heartbreaking. The seller of this property knew how this land was zoned when they purchased it, and it's not fair that we have to be harmed just so they can make a buck. Terra has spent a lot of money promoting our community, our lifestyle, and most importantly, our brand. We have seen our property values increase substantially over the past few years and are concerned that a rental building will take away the value that we have built. Terra is not a rental community, and in-and-out population, we're not known as a rental community, and in-and-out population doesn't help build our brand. No one's going to be homeless if this project isn't built. Perception is reality, and people are fickle. Just using the name Terra in the name of the apartment could spoil our apple cart and lower our property values. Thank you for your time, and please vote no on this project.
Thank you. That's all. I have signed up. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to come forward? Please come forward, state your name, and whether or not you've been sworn. Please come forward, state your name, and whether or not you've been sworn. You'll have three minutes. County residence, whether or not you've been sworn, and your name.
My name is William Phillips. I am a Manatee County resident, and I have been sworn. I bought my home at Terra Preserve in 2007, and it was a wonderfully quiet community. The traffic has gotten awful. I don't care whose study says what, up to 150 more cars is going to be incredibly detrimental to our community. Nonsense Creek was mentioned before. It happens to run directly through my backyard and into a preserve area that is the home to a great deal of wildlife. We have bobcats there, had a panther run across the road the other day, just saw a deer running across the road the day before yesterday. We have a lot of wildlife that depends on Nonsense Creek for their survival, and any building at that end of the creek is going to disrupt all of this. There has to be an increase in crime. We already see it with the residential areas and the hotels in the area. We don't want more of that. We want less of it. Our property values are doing very well right now. This is sure to hurt them dramatically. It is sure to have people fleeing our area, and the Terra apartments, really? They aren't part of us, and we are Terra. And we implore you to vote no on all of these changes. We want to preserve our lifestyle, our community, our wonderful area. Our wildlife is so important to us, the birds, everything that happens around our homes depends on preserving areas like the one that they're planning to develop, and we don't want that. And please vote no. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Please come forward, state your name, county residence, and whether or not you've been sworn.
Good morning, my name is Barbara Zimmerman. I am a resident of Manatee County and Ashley Oaks of Terra, and I have been sworn in. I live at a house that faces Terra Boulevard and Stone River Road. I sit in a chair, and I watch all this traffic coming and going. I can't use my lanai anymore because it's so loud that you can't even sit out there and talk. The house is right where Drury's Bluff comes out onto Stone River Road. There's a curve there, very dangerous. So, what we don't need is more people coming through our neighborhood and roaming around. Enough is enough. This builder knew what was going on before he purchased the land. He does not care about us and the people who live in this Terra community. I pray every night for my safety and security because things aren't the way they were. I asked you, would you want this complex built in your community? I ask that you vote no. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to come forward and speak for? Please come forward, state your name, whether or not you've been sworn, and county residence.
My name is Shay Hawkins-Berry. I'm a Manatee County resident, and I have been sworn. I actually represent the seller who's not able to be here today, Mike Raffino. He has COVID, so I'm representing him today, and he cares very much about this community. He's turned down numerous offers from an RV development to a storage development, and he cares very much about these people. I'm a single mother of three grown children that I raised here in Manatee County. They're all in their late 20s. My youngest daughter graduates law school this Friday and has already accepted a job back here at the Manatee County State Attorney's Office, and these are young professionals who need housing like this. Not all renters are crime-ridden individuals. A lot of them are young professionals who need this type of housing. And this property was originally zoned residential. I heard a lot of people say that he knew what it was zoned when he purchased the property, but Mr. Raffino actually rezoned it commercial in hopes of building it. At that time, the market crashed, then we had COVID, now interest rates are skyrocketing, inflation, so that's not the highest and best use anymore for this land. We feel that this apartment developer is local, has developed here in the Lakewood Ranch area, they know this area, and we feel that they're going to take great pride in what they build here. Like I said, Mr. Raffino was unable to develop this property since 2006. That's how long he's owned it. He bought it based on that land use matrix and wanted to take advantage of that here. So, we're asking when you deliberate about these issues today that you keep in mind that this DRI was approved many, many years ago, and that a property owner has every right to utilize that land use matrix, which is what he's trying to do here today. This developer did change their site plan. They have adhered to all the standards. They will adhere to all the setbacks and everything else that's required of this property, and so we're asking you today to approve this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Anyone in the public? We'll be closing the public comments section. All right, we'll close the public comments section. Staff, closing comments.
Good morning, Laura Gonzalez with Development Services, and I have been sworn. The first comment that I have is somebody mentioned about the R6. I think that she refers to RES6. This is the future land use category. The application is not changing the future land use map, so the RES6 is basically the future land use category that covers the most larger portion of the DRI, and this is not changing. Regarding compatibility, as I mentioned in my presentation, the Terra is a mixed-use project, and as such, it can have commercial or residential uses. And also, the surrounding areas exhibit a mix of zonings, GCPDC and A to the north, PDR to the south, PDMU to the east, and RDD6 and A1 to the west. So, I think the project is compatible with that situation, with that reality, and the proposed use in option A is a multifamily use that is a residential use and is compatible with the surrounding residential uses. A different type, yes, but it's compatible. Finally, the staff reviewed the proposal, and the conclusion is that the existing facilities can support the increase in the number of units that is proposed, or the commercial uses that are already approved. And we also have the school board report that says that it's okay with the current offering of schools in the area. Any questions?
Yes. Is this an area of known flooding at all? Stormwater? Denise, Ms. Greer?
Yeah, Denise Greer for staff. I can answer that. It is, and we're aware of it. We have some maps, if you want to see them. We are aware of the flooding, and actually, our stormwater engineering division put a business case together for some improvements in this area, but it did not make it on the five-year CIP. In addition, they do, any new stormwater facilities that are designed or modified will need to reduce the post-develop runoff by 25%, and they do have a stipulation as they're in the average reservoir watershed for 150% more treatment. But we are aware of localized flooding.
But this property will have to meet?
Yes, sir.
Have to hold its own water?
We even have a Bering River Water Management Plan that they will have to use when they do their design that takes into consideration some of these known flooding areas.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Mr. Rutledge?
Good morning.
Hi.
So, I had a couple of things that came out of the comments from this community, and I'd like to just kind of run this by you. You know, they kept talking about 150 vehicles, and what is the traffic count that this proposed modification? And I just wondered, what's the delta of residential versus commercial?
Well, remember that the, the number of residential units is the result of the, using the land use equivalency metrics. So they are trip equivalent, but I have transportation here that can provide more detail.
I did see him come in.
Mr. Rut, or we can have the applicant also cleared up? I think his palm back there?
I wanted to hear from our staff if you don't mind. I'm sure the applicant will have an answer, right, Scott?
Well, it's a, it's a land use equivalency matrix, so the delta is zero.
Well, that's my question.
Yeah. The delta should be zero. Let's put it that way.
But it's half, though.
I'm sorry?
But it's half. They reduced the number by half.
Well, that's units, but I'm talking about traffic.
That would reduce the traffic by half, though.
Well, we're going to hear from staff and we're going to hear from applicant then. So.
Okay. Nelson Galeano Transportation Planning.
Hola como?
Regarding the traffic data, let me, let me clarify some stuff. The data and methods that the traffic data has been collected are according with the standards of the transportation profession field. The trip generation that has been used for this project also comply with the regulation and is from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Initially, the traffic study states for, is 456 dwelling units, which creates about 88 trips during the PM peak hour. With the reduction of the size of the project right now, the traffic study is still valid and the reduction on trip generation is less than 60 trips during the PM peak hour. 60 trips during the PM peak hour is about one trip per minute, which in other words could be insignificant regarding the precision that the traffic data has been collected because there are some variations on traffic daily basis. Regarding the use and utilization of the land use equivalency, equivalency matrix, we see a trip neutrality. It means the number of, the threshold has not been achieved and the number of trips that a commercial creates are the same that, or less than the proposed development can create.
Okay. So this is the matrix using the standards that we use, whether I believe them or not, I don't, but is that this is a neutral commentary for the use of the land, whether it's the commercial maximum or this residential number? Is that correct?
Yes. Let me, let me clarify two, two, two things regarding trips. One thing is the number of trips and the other, the type of trips, the purpose of the trip. When we have commercial and residential closed in, in the proximity, a lot of trips don't go essentially on the, through, through a network. It means in this example, many trips don't go through, through State Route 70 because there are, the needs of, and the purpose of the trips are satisfied on the proximity. When the, and, and it maintains the trip neutrality, it's no new trips. But when the trips change to only for residential, three, the number of trips stays the same, but the length changed because the, 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 the purpose, the destination for, for the trip is not in the proximity. That is the only difference, the length of the trips because of the purpose of the trips, which is related to the land use. But in terms of numbers, it's the same.
Leaving the apartments to go to work, and so they go to 70. If it's commercial, 2,000 residents that live there are going, so you have different times and different trips. So the word neutrality is in the other beholder, I think.
Say it again, sorry?
Neutrality is the.
The number of trips, yes.
Okay. Okay, that, that helps me. Thank you. And can I, this is not for you, this is for?
Can, can we stay on that for just a second then?
Yes, sir, sir.
Ms. Gonzalez. Right now, right now today, tomorrow morning at dawn, what can be built on parcels 3V and 3Z?
Commercial, commercial uses. They have already entitlements for that. They have, I think, 28,000.
How many square feet of commercial can be built?
28,000 square feet of commercial.
Okay. And the land use equivalency matrix?
Mm-hmm.
If, I think it was in your presentation, how many apartments does that equal?
They are not changing the total of the entitlements, but, but with the 72 dwelling units that they are proposing, they only need to exchange 15,800 square feet.
The question is, right now there are 28,000 square feet of commercial allowed.
Yes.
How many apartments would that allow? According to your land use equivalency matrix?
I have to check. I don't have from the top of mind the number.
I don't know the answer, that's right, but you're right.
I think you do know the answer, but go ahead. I'm just saying it's the traffic.
It's a little more than.
Right. So if they, if someone comes in and develops 28,000 square feet of commercial, which they can do right now, tomorrow at dawn, whether it's a daycare, a Wawa, a bank, or whatever it is, then it will generate almost twice as much traffic as what is being proposed now if we change to the 72 units.
Sorry?
I, I follow you. Does that help?
Here's what we're going to do. Can, can the applicant respond to these, these questions? Scott is giving me a nod, so I'm getting nods from back there. Okay. So I'm going to recommend that we, because it's their job in the back to.
Prove it up.
Yes. So I'm willing to table this until we get to them now.
Okay.
Mr. Rudisil. I mean.
I'll be, I'll be readily. He can be Rudisil.
Guys switch.
Although maybe I should. He's younger than I am.
Better looking, too.
Thank you. I, I have this question. I, I saw here the commercial uses that are available for, to put on this property as it sits today, correct?
Yes.
It's pretty broad, isn't it?
Yeah. It is, it is, there is a schedule of uses that is part of the ordinance. It's an exhibit of the ordinance.
And it's, it's not as specific as kind of imagined where it's nail salons and convenience stores and so forth. It's a pretty broad spectrum of what they can put in there, right?
Yes. I have, yes, but this is, everything is in the schedule of uses.
Right. So one of the things that I think, and we talk about uncertainty, you know, we approve things that are uncertain, but it seems like there are a lot of commercial uses that could go there that would not be beneficial and not be an enhancement to the community by far. I mean, so that, okay, so I agree with that.
This is a broad spectrum of commercial uses. You're right.
While, while we're on that, Mr. Rutledge, do you have the schedule of uses readily available?
It's in the report, I think.
Can you drop it up there?
Mr. Chair, could I also say that one reason I believe Laura was having an issue answering your question easily was, I believe there's still some residential units still available in the DRI, so they're not.
They're not taking all of them.
They're not taking all of them. So only a portion, portion of what they need is being used. Okay.
But my, if they were, 28,000 square feet of commercial equals how many apartments? That's my que, that was my question. And I don't know what that answer is.
154.
It's going to be double, right?
Good morning, Rosina Lederberg, staff. Isn't your screen?
Oh, it's, there's, so there's, and how do I read this? Everything that's listed here is allowed. Is that what you're telling us?
I believe there's more than one page.
I know. But so all of these things underlined are allowed. Forget about all the Ps and E Xs and all that, or what's the summary?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Schenk.
We have to be careful here. So it's hard to read, but there's two columns saying subphase 3, 4, and 3Z, and there are Xs and Ps. Only the uses that have Ps by them are allowed.
Okay, that's what.
No, they've underlined all the uses for some reason.
So it's on the right-hand column where they're all yellowed in, the Ps are what's allowed. So that's the answer.
Correct.
So if it's a P, there you go, in the yellows, then, then construction service, dry cleaners, food catering, funeral chapel, lawn care landscaping, all of those are potentially allowed uses. Okay.
Sign painting service, taxi cab.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Emergency shelters. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, I have the answer for your question about the how many, number of dwelling units are equivalent to the 28,000 square feet of commercial.
Okay.
It's 127.
So 28,000 square feet of commercial equals 127.
Yes.
127 apartments worth of traffic. And I understand that maybe they're going to, but the number of vehicles moving through that intersection, whatever, is now equal or would be equal. They might be going different places, but it's the number generally.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Good job.
Buckle up.
And so we now have talked about the uses commercial. Okay. The other questions I think are for the submitter if I, so I'm done.
All right, let's see. Anything else for staff? Is this part of the CDD or not? Is this piece, I'm getting no's from, so I'll let them, I believe them. So it's not part of the Tara CDD? Okay.
Mr. Chair, you have three comments when you're ready before.
Ms. Schenk, go ahead and go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to know three things. One, we heard some testimony about rentals. The planning commission, the board have to be blunt as to whether the units are owned or rented in the Fair Housing Act. You can't discriminate between one or the other. We're looking at the use multifamily. I know you know that, but I want to state it for the record. Secondly, there was discussion about the applicant waiving their property rights. And fortunately, unfortunately, I was involved for 10 years in litigation with the Tara DRI and some other property rights issues. And the citizens at that point, 10 years ago, said the applicant waived their property rights. I just want to be clear. The wave only pertained to a certain portion west of Tara Boulevard. They agreed to keep it vacant until a bank could be built on the other corner. And eventually, Mr. Barnaby processed an application for pickable course to be put on there. The applicant allowed that. So there's no waiver of property rights pertaining to this parcel, if I'm aware of. And thirdly, there was hearsay testimony. One was the waiver of property rights, the other was the intent of the property owner who was ill and couldn't attend. Well, I'm sorry, couldn't attend, but we have to have testimony under oath. So the testimony from that, from Ms. Clark about the intent is only for informational purposes at this point. So I have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Schenk. Anything else for, let's see, staff? I heard, I heard the word panther. Is environmental here? Is there any other panthers roaming around Tara these days? That we, that we're aware of?
Hi, good morning. Kathleen Davis. I'm with the Environmental Planning Section, and I have been sworn. The applicant did do a Threatened Endangered Species survey of the property, and they found no listed species. So, I mean, we have to go by that, so.
So there certainly could be, but.
Right. And they would be required to do another one, an updated one, time of FSP.
More than a year or something from?
Whenever they would resubmit, so.
Can I ask one other question?
Mr. Rutledge.
When they say there are none there, does that mean they find no evidence of their existence at all? In other words, droppings, footprints?
Correct. We're assuming that they're looking for all of those, and most of the time, they do provide those details in the environmental narrative. And if they don't, we ask for that. So yes, they're looking for burrows, they're looking for evidence of species, they're looking for nest cavities, things like that. They're looking up in trees for nests.
Unfinished dinners, stuff like that, right?
I'm sorry?
Unfinished meals?
Yeah. I would assume so, yes.
Those cats, whatever. Okay, thank you.
Staff, I have a suggestion for staff. It's probably not going to be something that we're going to discuss today, but the board might be interested to know the history of uses that have been allowed on this property through the evolution of 40 years of a DRI. You know, from 1985 to 1987, it was this. From 87 to 93, it was this. Just to say, it's been 18 things or three things, or I don't know. If I asked to get that now, it probably, we wouldn't get it.
Heads would blow up.
Yeah, heads would blow up. But I think the board might find that interesting. I would. All right, is there anything else for staff? Anything else? All right, applicant closing comments.
Mr. Rutledge or Mr.? Oh, sorry.
Mr. Rudisil. Good morning. Not after you. Good morning. Not after you. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, again, Scott Rudisil for the record. I'm going to, a lot of things I'm going to hit on, I think, have already been touched on, but I think they're important, so. This is a site that has now been 45 years since this project was approved, and it has gone undeveloped, but it is not open space. These are development parcels. They've been development parcels for the entire history of this project, and they're, as was noted, they're approved for commercial uses today. Those uses include hotel, gas station, vehicle repair, major vehicle repair. So there's a significant commercial uses that are allowed on this site. The other thing that was mentioned in terms of the, in terms of the traffic and the trip generation, yes, this is a full conversion on this site. If they converted all the commercial entitlements, it would be to 127 units. What's being proposed is 72. So significantly below even what could be done on this site with the conversion. And, and keep in mind, this site was actually, it was transferred an additional 11,000 square feet of commercial from the developer. The developer still has rights to move entitlements around on these parcels. So you could get more entitlements on these sites than are even there now, but just under the historical entitlements, they'd be able to get up to 127 units here. If I could pull the slide show back up for a second. I'm going to talk a little bit about, flip through this, the compatibility issue. So this is a map that shows the existing three-story buildings within the Tara DRI. And you can see there are several of them. I think it was mentioned they have, they have several hotels along, along that area along 70. There's an ALF. So this area along 70 has several parcels that are already developed with, with three This map reflects all of the existing multifamily within the Tara DRI. It has multifamily all over the place, mixed in with single-family, paired villas, and then multifamily throughout the entire project. It's a mixed-use project. That, it's intended to have a mix of uses, not only a mix of the type of residential uses, but, you know, mixed in with the commercial. So we think multifamily in this location is very consistent and compatible. It's consistent with the existing land use approvals and the equivalency matrix that already exists for this site. We're not asking for any, any deviations from the existing development standards that have been in place for Tara for years, and we're asking for your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Rudisil, and or, I guess this might be staff. Is there any additional right of way needed along Tara or being asked for, or you'll deal with that at FSP level, or we just don't know yet?
I don't know the answer to that. If, if it is in the, in the traffic needs analysis, then we would have to provide that right of way, but I'm not aware of that.
We don't know at this point.
Oh, wait, there, there is one thing I want to mention. On the DRI, this portion of Tara has a property owners association. So it is separate from the remainder of Tara in terms of the DRI and the homeowners association, but they do have their own property association here.
Connected to the commercial?
Yes, that's right.
And that has a separate association or?
Correct. Totally, totally separate.
I had a couple of questions.
Yes, Mr. Rutledge.
So this, this development will pay into a maintenance association, but not managed by the particular groups that may have been represented today? This would be by the commercial unit with the publics and all those guys? They're, they're all in a separate design?
Yes.
Okay. This, this presentation is with the statement that your design will meet the Tara codes as provided in the PUD, correct?
Yes, we'll have to. We're not, we're not asking.
You're not asking for any variation? That what was set out, this is 40 years ago, is the standard you're using or the updated model of whatever that is, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, and once you do this, you're, you're not intending to add any commercial to it, even though you're under the, so there's no plan to develop beyond what you're putting in there, the 77 units?
That's correct.
So that constrains that property to 77 units, 150 traffic?
72.
72.
72, sorry. So, so we kind of put a cap on any other traffic going in that location that might have been available before, correct?
Right. They're intending to use the whole site, yes.
Okay. And? And the water, the water situation, this has never been designed as part of a retention, mitigation, water component to the overall TARA?
No, this, this site will be designed and.
With commercial use or some use?
Right, right. Under the current standards.
Having green space as a typical commercial. So.
Yes.
It doesn't provide any unique or special, it's not, it was not intended to provide a special use or water control or management condition? For the rest of TARA. In other words, it's site-specific, right?
Correct. This, right. This site was not open space or water, stormwater management for the rest of TARA.
Sorry, I didn't say that very well. Okay. And will your involvement cause some benefit to the water conditions as they are in the PUD overall? Or, I, I, I wanted you to clarify what was said by staff here.
I mean, Ms. Greer is probably a better one to answer that, but I believe what she said was that the, the rate of runoff would have to be reduced.
Mitigated, right?
By 25% or.
That, that's the code. You have to do that.
Yes.
Right. And you're not intending not to do that?
No.
Okay. You're not going to break the law. Okay. Sorry, that, that was my question.
Are there any known wetlands on the site?
There is a small wetland. I think it is about a third of an acre, and that is being impacted, yes.
Okay. But it's less than half an acre, so it'll be a nationwide permit and.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. One other question. Have you met with the, the community as a whole?
So my client has had meetings with the community, yes, on these, on these topics.
Gosh, your heads are going the wrong way for that answer.
What's that?
You can't see this picture, but you're going like this, and everybody on that side in red is going the other way. So did you have, did you have announced meetings, brought everybody together, showed boards, told them what you're doing? Or you mean they just had meetings because they talked to them?
We had, hold on a second, let me bring Margaret up here, because I'm, I know that the, the client, since the, the last meeting, the client has had meetings with the leadership of the association. I'm trying to remember what our, okay. So our initial neighborhood meeting that was held for the project was back in June of last year.
Okay, before the first submission?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay.
All right, anything else for staff? I mean, for applicant? All right. Commission discussion, motion, action?
So I'm, I'm really hoping to get some guidance from the rest of the, I understand the request from the community, and I, I'm hard pressed to say it meets the requirement of, you know, fitting into the community when I hear the community say it doesn't. Also, I'm kind of guided by the fact that the, the law and the PUD and all that provides the right to do this, and it could be worse, you know? They could come by and say they're going to put a gas station or an auto repair shop in there, and, you know, commercial is usually considered a worse zoning neighbor than residential. And so I struggle with the ULI thinking of how this is done versus what the neighborhood says, but I'm, I'm hard pressed to go against the neighbors. So I'd love to hear what the.
Well, Mr. Rutledge, I tend to agree. I mean, I'd, I'd much rather have 72 apartments behind me than, than 28,000 square feet of a Wawa. So when someone asks, would you do this in my neighborhood, my answer is probably yes, because I'd much rather have people living behind me than cars coming in with a 24-hour service established behind there, truck repair shop, or, you saw the list of potential uses there. And something is going to go there, okay? And if we say no to 72 units, when the traffic goes down, all right, that could be there, or at least is equal to the 28,000 square feet that's going to go there. So the number of cars doesn't change. There's no delta, no additional flooding, no impacts to, well, there's an impact to a well in, but it's less than a half an acre, so we need a nationwide permit. That's essentially no impact. I mean, I'm hard pressed to say no again. So I'll be voting for it if there is such a motion.
And, you know, the one other thing I, you know, was looking at is the developer, it's surrounded on most sides by non-residential units. There's, there's one group that, this, I'm sorry, but most, all the, all of them have roads next to it. They're not housing, you know, you're not putting up a fence and a berm to try and mitigate it. And I think the noise levels that you would experience from residents living there versus, you know, car repair shop, a 24-hour vet clinic, I mean, there, I can imagine all kinds of terrible things. And, and so I, I struggle with it. So it, it meets a lot of the right kind of ULI thinking of what good planning is, because all the other multifamily ones are up at that top end by the 70. They'll go out, they won't go through the neighborhood necessarily. So I, I just, I don't know, stuff.
Trailing into motion. We're all staring at our screens. We're not ignoring you, all this electronic stuff. We used to do this verbally, but now we have to stare at a screen. See, we have a motion by Mr. Delezline, motion to approve. I seconded it. We may now vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve signify now.
And Mr. Chair, this is on number three, the ordinance 2467 DRI TARA, because I can't see what's up there.
We'll take two separate motions, one on three, which is what we're voting on now. And, let's see, it hasn't come up that everyone's voted, but.
Oh, now it's coming up.
Passes five, nothing. Now we'll entertain a motion on item number four. Motion to approve and seconded. You may now vote. Algae, let's us. Motion carries unanimously. We are going to take a short, 10:51. Yeah, we're going to take a 10-minute break. So let's, I'm sorry, Ms. Shenk.
Mills will switch with me. Fine, good.
Yeah, we'll take a short 10-minute break. But let's get back at 10 minutes, because we've got a lot left to do.
I figured you'd do it anyway, so.
I'm married with two daughters. I've been told. All right, we're back to order. Thank you. Item number five. Have any commissioners had any ex parte communications on item number five?
No, sir.
No.
No. Ms. Greer, would you please read item number five into the record?
Item number five, ZL 2325, 53rd Avenue East rezone, Invest PILLC, PLN 23050020. It's quasi-dugicial. And we do have James McDevitt here for staff. It's a rezone of approximately 1.54 acres, containing a portion of parcel two and all of parcel, parcel one from PDRM, which was 0.74 acres, and a rez six, which is the remaining 0.8 acres, well, I'm sorry, 0.8 acres into GCL zoning district. It's generally located 600 feet east of the intersection of State Road 70 and 15th Street East, and extending approximately 300 feet along the north side of 53rd Avenue East.
Thank you, Ms. Greer. Is the applicant present?
Good morning, planning commissioners. My name is Paige Estegaribia. I'm with ZNS Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. And I'm here today to speak with you all about 53rd Avenue rezon.
Before you get started, can you confirm whether you've been sworn?
Been sworn.
Thank you.
Our team is Invest PILLC, who's the applicant, myself and Margaret Tusing from ZNS Engineering. Mark Barnaby is our legal counsel with Blaylock Walters, and Michael Yates with Palm Traffic. Just a little bit about the. Just a little bit about the location of the property. It has frontage on 53rd Avenue East and it's east of 15th Street East. Both of those are urban corridors. The rezone involves parcel 1, .38 acres and all of that parcel, and then parcel two, which is 1.16 acres. The future land use designations for this are ROR, right along 53rd Avenue East, and then rez nine in the rear. The zoning request is for 1.54 total acres, .8 acres from RSF six and .74 acres from PRM. The justification for this rezone request is that it is a commercial redevelopment opportunity of an underutilized property on an urban corridor. It's an infill development, also located within the urban service area. It meets commercial locational criteria. It's located within 700 feet of a node, that node being 53rd Avenue East and 15th Street East. And general commercial allows for a greater flexibility of uses, retail, restaurant, things that are not allowed in the PRM. And one of the reasons that the applicant has asked to rezone that section of RSF in the north is, in the event in the future, out of an abundance of caution, if FDOT has issues regarding the access, if we are not allowed to use both sides of the property for access, the applicant wanted to be able to use that as a turnaround back there. If not a turnaround, and if we are able to use the accesses, then the applicant wanted to be able to use it for parking, and the parking needs to be located on consistent zoning district. It's also compatible with adjacent general commercial right next door and also general commercial in the surrounding area. And with that, we respectfully request your recommendation for approval for this rezone.
Thank you. Any questions for staff or for the applicant at this point? Okay, staff presentation?
Good morning, planning commission. For the record, James McDevitt with Development Services, and I have been sworn. Paige went over the site, the location and the request, so I'll go through those just briefly. We have two parcels. Parcel one is .38 acres. The portion of parcel two is to the north and west, and that is approximately 1.16 acres. The current zoning is PRM and RSF six. The request is to go to GCL. And this is the entire site from the boundary survey. In the center there is a FDOT stormwater pond that's not included. So there is one stipulation with this GCL. That's what makes it a limited rezone, and it is that at time of final site plan, the proposed project shall demonstrate compliance with the minimum lot size requirements of the general commercial zoning district. The reasoning for this is that that road at frontage on the west side of the property that is fairly narrow looking, based on their boundary survey, it's approximately 51, 52 feet in width. The general commercial zoning district has a minimum front, a minimum lot width of 75 feet. The code allows for up to 80% for the minimum front lot line. That's the portion that's on the road frontage. 52 is less than that 80%, which would be 60 feet. So at time of final site plan, if they intend to develop that portion, they're going to have to demonstrate compliance with general commercial zoning district. And this table appears to not have been updated properly, but the positive aspect for this is that the general commercial zoning district allows for the establishment of commercial uses within the activity node created at the intersection of State Road 70 and 15th Street East, both which are thoroughfares and classified by the roadway network on map 5A. The negative aspect is the rezone expands a range of general commercial uses along State Road 70, which could have potential adverse impacts to adjacent residential uses regarding uses, traffic, lighting, and noise. The mitigating measure is that if improvements to public infrastructure is required, then it will be done so at the expense of the developer. It is the opinion of staff that the requested rezone is consistent with applicable comprehensive plan goals, objectives, policies, as well as applicable standards in the Land Development Code, and I'm available if you have questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this point?
Yes, sir.
I had one question.
Mr. Rutledge.
Is there some intention to incorporate the pond into this development at some point that they've been discussing with you or no? It's always been this horseshoe shape.
Only the two portions, the portion of parcel two and parcel one are the only parts included in this.
Pond's a state pond for 70. It's owned by the state. They're hard to get along with.
I've actually met them.
So I doubt a joint usage pond agreement will happen there, yeah. Anything else for the applicant? I mean, for the staff?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Well, open the public hearing, or public comment portion. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Anyone in the public? See no one come forward to close public comment? Staff closing comments? Applicant, one question. Is this, is this a reuse process?
So I'm not 100% sure of the applicant's intentions with the uses. I know that the current use right now is, I mean, the building is not in great shape, at least from what I understand.
That's my concern. It's nasty.
Yeah, so I'm.
When I looked at this, I was a little unwilling to straight rezone to commercial with that building and that owner sitting there because it's unpleasant.
The, I know in the past there were discussions about multifamily, sandwich shop, retail type, a type use. I don't know if that's still on the table, but I know that that was a discussion in the past.
All right, but any general commercial use will have standard buffers fitting the general commercial zoning category, et cetera?
Yes.
All right, fine. Anything else for staff and or applicant? If not, chair will entertain a motion. We have a motion by Mr. Rutledge, second by Mr. Delezline. We may now vote. Motion carries unanimously four to nothing. Thank you. Let's see, item number six. Has any commissioners had any ex parte communications on item number six?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Greer, would you please read that into the rec, I mean, yes, Ms. Greer, would you please read that into the record?
Item number six, PDMU 2329 CG, Allentown Gillette rezone, Christensen LLC, EGTHS LLC owner. We have Chris Claypack here for staff, and it's a rezone of approximately 15.66 acres, generally located on the west side of Allentown Gillette, approximately 1,300 feet north of 21st Street Court East and approximately 650 feet south of 29th Street East. It's commonly known as 2703 36th Avenue East in Palmetto, and it's from planned development residential to planned development mixed-use zoning district, approving a general development plan for a mixed-use residential project up to 187 residential units and up to 150,000 square feet of neighborhood serving commercial and approximate, and approving a schedule of permitted and prohibited uses as voluntarily proffered by the applicant.
Thank you. Is the applicant represented? Mr. Rudisil?
Good morning again, commissioners. For the record, I'm Scott Rudisil. I have been sworn. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Eastern Meridian Group. Briefly introduce our project team here. We have Tony Tanico. He is with Eastern Meridian Group. He is here, as well as Eric Lindsay and Dwayne Settles. And then Clint Cuffel with WRA is our project engineer, and Steve Henry with Lynx is our, is our traffic engineer on the project. So as was mentioned, we're requesting a rezone from PDR to PM, PDMU for this site. This site was rezoned to PDR a couple of years ago for a multifamily residential project at that time, and so the current request would allow for a mix of uses and development options on the site. The primary intent, though, is to do a mixed-use project here with commercial parcels along the frontage on Allentown Gillette and then with the multifamily in the rear, and that would be a maximum of 187 units in that configuration, up to four stories with neighborhoods serving commercial along the front. This is the type of project that is envisioned and encouraged by the COP plan for this area. It's a rapidly developing area of the county. It's an infill site. It's at an activity node. It's actually partially within two activity nodes. It's near employment opportunities. It is promoting mixed use, and it is designed to be compatible with the surrounding uses. The, this is the project site. It's located on Allentown Gillette Road, just south of 29th Street East, and those two boxes that you see, the purple box on top is the activity node at 29th Street East. The blue box on the bottom is the activity node for 21st Street Court East, and you can see we're, we're fully in the, the one node. We're partially in, in the other one. And here's your future land use map. You can see this site is rez six. And then here's a map showing some of the approved projects in this area. I love this map. This is quite a mix of uses here. So just starting at the project site, you have multifamily approved to the north of the site. You have multifamily approved to the southwest of the site. There's a residential project directly to the west of the site, and then on the other side of that, you have the Silverado Planned Industrial Project, 250,000 square feet of industrial. To the east of the site, across Allentown Gillette Road, you have the Our Lives Project, which includes commercial, industrial, and residential uses. And then further to the east of that is the International Trade Port Project, three and a half million square feet of, of industrial, amongst others. So this project does fit right in with, with how this area is developing with that mix of uses. We do have three specific approval requests. I think you'll find them all familiar, though first is for the modification to the secondary front yard. And the other two are the specific approvals that allow for you to have individual driveway garage spaces on a multifamily project, and all three of these specific approvals were approved with the original zoning of this site as well. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Clint to talk about the details of the GDP.
Great. Thanks, Scott. Clint Cuffel with WRA Engineering, and I have been sworn. As you see on the screen, this is the GDP that's presented in the, in the, in the package. Specifically, what I want to note is the buffers and setbacks. The buffers along the, along the west, we actually have a Seminole Railroad parcel that actually separates us from the single-family development to the west. And also what you see is in green, we worked with staff, make sure compatibility to the north and the south of our project was, was dealt with, and what we have is there in green, where we can't, we're not proposing any residential buildings over two stories in the green, and also no commercial buildings within the green area surrounding the site. So the mixed-use component and any residential buildings over two stories will be condensed there in the center of the project and really be focused towards the frontage on Allentown Gillette. Another thing to note is you can see our access point on Allentown Gillette. We're in the middle of coordinating with the Our Lives Project on the east with, with the county engineer, Scott May, and making sure our two access points on Allentown Gillette will line up, you know, have left turns, right turns, and make sure those two access points are fully coordinated and will line up. As you saw what Scott showed in the area, there's some very rapidly growing, very large projects, so a proposed mixed-use project in this area compatible with, with the land uses is what we're proposing to bring forward to the county here. That's really the, this is really the big summary of the GDP. Here's a picture. I want to show that west buffer. As you can see, the, the single-family homes in the west, they have, they have about 30-foot buffer themselves. Then we have a 40-foot wide Seminole Railroad FPL slash actual parcel that we don't own. So that whole area there will have to remain undisturbed because we have, we're not proposing any development within that area. And then we also have a buffer on top of that. So that's really what, we want to make sure that natural buffer stays. It will stay with this project. Again, the key takeaways, kind of summarize, it's compatibly and consistent with the current development patterns. It's really the right project, right location for a mixed-use development that it's actually in two separate activity nodes on a very large county thoroughfare, Allentown Gillette, and we're here, I believe we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant at this point? Staff, staff presentation?
Good morning. Chris Claypack with Development Services, and I have been sworn. The applicant did a pretty good job of summarizing the project. Briefly go over a few items. So the rezone, the request was a rezone of approximately 15.66 acres from planned development residential to planned development mixed-use with a general development plan to allow up to 187 residential units and up to 150,000 square foot of neighborhood serving commercial uses. There's the site location, generally located west of Allentown Gillette Road, 1,300 foot north of 21st Street Court East and approximately 650 feet south of 29th Street East. There's a wonderful street view for you of the site. So some site data here. It's one parcel totaling 15.66 acres. The zoning is PDR, Planned Development Residential, with a future land use category of rez six, and it's also located within the UI RA or the Urban Infill Redevelopment Area. It's also located within the activity node of Allentown Gillette and 29th Street East. And as the applicant noted, there's a five-acre parcel running north-south that bisects the property, and it's owned by FPL, and to be clear, it is not part of this development project. As you can see here, surrounding zoning, we have PDR to the north. East is the PDMU, Our Lives Matter Project. South is A1, and to the west is an established single-family residential PDR neighborhood. We're within the rez six and surrounded by rez six as well for future land use category. So just some site history. Historically, the site's been used for agricultural purposes, and then in August of '22, the site rezoned from A1 to PDR with a general development plan, and that approved 93 residential units, and it also included all of the residential dwelling unit types that are being requested of today. For the residential portion, as you can see here, we've got two accesses, or the applicant has two accesses proposed along Allentown Gillette Road, up to 187 dwelling units, including the single-family detached, single-family semi-detached, single-family attached, and multifamily dwelling units, with a proposed density of 11.94 dwelling units per gross acre, and with the rez six future land use category with a mixed-use project at an activity node, it does allow for up to 12 dwelling units per acre, as well as a 75-foot setback for any residential structure exceeding two stories in height. In terms of the commercial, the commercial is proposed in the cross-hatched area fronting Allentown Gillette Road with up to 150,000 square foot of neighborhood serving commercial uses, a maximum building height of four stories, and all commercial structures will provide a 75-foot setback from the north and south. There are three specific approval requests. This is one we have commonly seen recently with the reduction of us, of the secondary front yard from, from the required 20-foot to 10-feet, as well as an alternative to allow for the backing onto a public or private travel lane for multifamily units, and as well as the alternative to allow multiple stacking of spaces for multifamily units. This is kind of a new design that we're starting to see in our area with, with apartment complex, multifamily units where they provide a garage for the tenants to be able to, to pull into, and then subsequently, if they have two vehicles, somebody will park right behind them. So it's essentially acting as if it was like a single-family dwelling unit that we see commonly. Some positive aspects, the surrounding area is really transitioning from an agricultural use to low-medium density and, and mixed-use developments in the area. The minimum commercial square footages have been provided to ensure a mixed-use development. So we see that when people, when, when applicants come in and ask for, for a mixed-use density bonus, our, our mixed-use definition doesn't really have much teeth in it. bonus, our, our mixed-use definition doesn't really have much teeth in it while the applicant has proffered a stipulation to, to ensure mixed-use development is achieved so that it unlocks the, the, the density bonus of 12 dwelling units per gross acre, as well as a schedule of uses table, which has been proffered as well to ensure compatibility for, for the neighborhood serving commercial uses. The rez six only allows for neighborhood serving commercial uses. Some negative aspects is that the site plan lacks details to illustrate placement and orientation of various dwelling unit types and commercial uses. There are three and four-story structures proposed. There's no interneighborhood tie proposed as well, as well as the additional traffic noise and lighting generally associated with commercial developments. For mitigating factors, the project will be further reviewed at PSP/FSP submittal for impacts to the surrounding properties and infrastructure regarding traffic, light, noises, as well as the applicant has provided 75-foot setback for the northern, southern, and western property boundaries for all commercial structures and any residential structure over two stories. And then, of course, for the structures exceeding three stories, we've got the 401.5 building height compatibility as applicable. And I touched briefly on the UIRA, or the Urban Infill Redevelopment Area. This is the, the definition. It's a whole lot, so I've kind of left out a little bit of it, just to kind of slim it down a little bit. And it shall mean an area of the county for the promotion of a Florida urban village design concept strengthening neighborhood identity and encouraging mixed-use commercial areas. As you can see to the, with the map on the left, the site is completely within the urban infill redevelopment area. For LDC compliance, they have provided all of the required open space. They provided the 20-foot roadway buffers along Ellington Gillette, as well as the 15-foot green belt buffers along all other boundaries, as well as the applicable setbacks have been provided as well. For the comprehensive plan, the max density within the rez six future land use category is 12, 12 dwelling units per gross acre, and they provide, they've proposed 11.94, as well as the FAR floor area ratio for rez six is one, and they have proposed a 0.22. And they've also provided the schedule of uses to ensure the neighborhood serving commercial uses only. And I had touched on the mixed-use stipulations. I just kind of wanted to bring that up here for you. And it's stipulation A7, which is achieving the maximum allowable residential densities contingent upon a mixed-use development that provides a commercial or office component. The following commercial square footages shall be provided based upon the following dwelling units. So, at 93 dwelling units, that's where no density bonus has been requested. So, at that point, they, they are not requesting any density bonus, so zero square feet will have to be provided for commercial. And then anything above that 93 where they're unlocking that, that density bonus is when they're going to have to start providing that commercial component. And it is the opinion of staff that the rezone to planned development mixed use with a general development plan can be found to be consistent with a comprehensive plan and in compliance with the applicable provisions of the Land Development Code. I welcome any questions.
Question. How about right-of-way being dedicated along Ellington Gillette? And you can defer to the applicant if you'd prefer on their, why don't we, hold on. We'll do it in your closing comments if you're deferring to the applicant. Turn lanes also will be discussed at time of, time of final site plan?
Yes, sir. There's actually also a stipulation in here referring to the, to the required turn lanes along the thoroughfares.
Is there going to be a land use equivalency matrix? Because while your chart said either this or this, but what if it's in between this and this?
There's none proposed.
So, go back to your chart of your, these many units versus, yeah. So, what if it's, so if it's 93 units, it's 94, they have to do 5,000 square feet?
Correct.
It's all or nothing. It's not a trade-off.
Correct. Minimum 5,000 square foot.
Okay. Go to the GDP if you could. Look at the northwest corner. I think it's a technicality, but the 75-foot buffer should curve with the property line in green, or it's maybe not a 75-foot buffer there. Know what I'm saying?
I think the intent of, of what this is-
I understand what the intent is. That drawing is maybe a little bit confusing because it's 75 feet from where? You see what I'm saying? Doesn't follow the curve of that inside.
So, let, let me clarify that. We actually own a parcel on the, on the west side of the, so you see the black triangle?
So, then the 75 feet is over there, which would mean that there's none here.
But actually, if you see the dimension, that there's actually 134.
You need a radius in there.
You need a radius in there because-
So, we can put the radius, so you, you want 75 feet from actually-
No, no, I don't, I don't want anything. I don't want there to be any confusion about what it is there.
Okay, I got you.
So-
No, I think it's very doable.
It's okay to leave it like that, just as long as that's-
Clarify.
It's not radius is what you're saying. It is that square.
But we, yeah, we'll clarify that.
Well, that's fine. Okay.
Can I, you want me to answer the right-of-way real quick?
No.
Okay.
Yes, you can.
The, yeah, we are designating 30-foot of future right-of-way setback of additional 30, 30-foot-
Are you dedicating that now?
We're not-
Or are you going to dedicate it if the county ever wants it?
We are reserving it for the county. If they need it, they'll come pay us for that 30 feet, but we're-
Whoa, 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 you're going to have to pay them 13 years from now at 4.3 million dollars?
We, it's-
Hold on.
Yes, sir. That's the way we work right now. We have, they have to provide a setback so they can't build anything in it.
But they could dedicate it now.
We cannot, we are not allowed by the county attorney's office to do that, unless they are using it for turn lanes or something that they need just for their project.
Good old Nolan and Dolan in exactions. So, got to thank our illustrious judiciary for that. But there's case law, case law on that.
They could dedicate it now, and you could pay them $10. So, it's not an extraction.
So, I, I, again, that's not the way the case law reads, but it has to be, and there has to be a rational nexus for the development accomplished by the time that the, the quit-pro quo takes place. So, I think, again, I don't want to really get too in the weeds on it, but-
Well, I'm in the weeds. I mean, the, the whole point of this is that, you know, if, 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 if I got to pay for it, and if I got to pay for it 22 years from now, and now it's $387,000 an acre versus, you know, making the deal now and the county buying it at a, at the value it's worth. I mean-
Right. The development has not yet been accomplished, and that's, that's the point.
They can get, go ahead, Mr. Rudisell. We're, we're just random now. It's back and forth. We've lost all control. Go ahead, Mr. Rudisell.
I completely appreciate where you're coming from, but-
Okay.
In support of what the county attorney's office is saying, they have to do an individualized analysis as to whether the-
Fine. I give up. Fine.
Chairman Bedford, there may be a need that they may need to dedicate some with-
I can't compete up by both sides. I give up at that point.
With their turn lanes, though.
Was there anything else? Is there anything else for staff so I can shut up? No. We'll open the public comment portion of this. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come forward and speak for against this item? Anyone in the public? See no one come forward to close public comments? Staff closing comments?
I guess Chris Klepek for the record. I'd, the final thing that I'd like to, to point out is that that 75-foot is a, is a setback. It's not a buffer. It's a, it's a structure setback in that northwest corner.
Yeah. It's just a square, and I just want to make sure it's a square and not a radius following that, because if it's a radius following that, then the drawing's wrong. But if it really is a square, okay.
Understood. All right, fine.
Chairman, I do love the way you think, so I, you know, I'm there with you. Yeah, all right. I'm trying, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to soften the, the tag team that Mr. Rudisell and I had-
Next time, just agree with me. It'll be easier.
I'm trying to soften the, the, the brunt of my top turnbuckle elbow.
It's okay. All right. If nothing else, Chandler and Chair will entertain a motion. Now, I missed the over-under. It was 11:32. We have a motion to approve by Mr. DeLezine, seconded by Mr. Ralidge. You may vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number seven, let's see, item number seven. Have any commissioners had any ex parte communication on item number seven?
No, sir.
No. Ms. Greer, would you please read item number seven into the record?
Item number seven, PDR 2319 ZP. The Oaks at Rutland Ranch, Johnson and Stinson, Brett C. Johnson and Brenda J. Johnson, Robert H. Stinson, and Gail M. Stinson are the owners. Oak Development Group LLC is the contract purchaser, and we have Laura Gonzalez here for staff. It's a rezone of approximately 58 acres from A1 to PDR zoning district, generally located north on, on the north side of County Road 675, approximately 1.14 miles west of the intersection of Ni, North Ry Road, and commonly known as 15816, County Road 675. Parish, and it's approving a preliminary site plan for 108 family detached dwelling units.
Thank you, Ms. Greer. Applicant? Good morning, Mr. Rudisell.
Good morning. Apologize. Sometimes it just lines up that way, you know? I'm Scott Rudisell, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, the Oak Development Group, for the Oaks at Rutland Ranch project.
And just to be consistent, you have been sworn for this one, too?
Yes, I have. I have been sworn.
Very good.
Casey Krauser is here with Oak Development Group. We also have Andrew Island and Doug Brower. They are engineers at Langen Engineering. And Maximo Polanco, also with Langen, is our, our traffic engineer on the project. All right. This is the project site. It's approximately 53 acres located on County Road 675, just to the west of the aviary. This is a little closer view, so you don't have to squint at your screen. The project is also adjacent to the Creekside, Creekside Project, which you can't see here, but I will show you in future slides, and that is, that is under construction as well. And this is the zoning map. The Creekside Project is, is located there where the PDR is adjacent to the site. And then here's your future land use map. This entire area is, is designated as UF3. Here's a map just showing some of the projects in the area. You have Salt Meadow to the west of the site, and the aviary, and the Lazy Sea Ranch projects to the east of the site, as well as Ry Ranch and others. And then, as was mentioned, the Creekside Project, which is, which is directly adjacent to the site. So, this is an area of the county that is, that is developing. And the request before you is a rezone to PDR with a preliminary site plan for 108 single-family detached lots. The proposed density is just over two units, the acre, which is well below the three that is allowed in the UF3. More than half of this project is proposed as open space. And this is the site plan. So, there are approximately 10 acres of wetlands on this site, you know, almost, you know, almost 20% of the site. The applicant has worked very hard to design around those wetlands. It was reduced the number of lots several times during the process. And the result is we, we now have less than an acre of wetland impacts on the site. The applicant is mitigating those impacts on site, so you're going to have wetland enhancement on site, and that is in that, that area to the north. They're also preserving upland habitat on this site. I think they have over five acres of, of upland preservation, so greatly exceeding the requirements for the upland, and that is incorporated into the, into the wetland and area to the north. Project is connecting to the public roadways that are being built right now within the Creekside. So, if you see, you can see the outline of Creekside. It has the, you know, we do these interneighborhood ties, and we show them going off the map. And we did that on the Creekside Project. This is how they connect. So, this is the project coming in now. It is making that connection to the public roadways that were designated for Creekside. And so then, if you see the, the connecting piece that comes out to County Road 675, that will be an emergency access only. Staff did not want another access point in this location, so that piece will be an emergency access. It will not only serve this project, but will provide, now, will provide an emergency access for the Creekside Project, which, which they didn't have before. We are asking for a specific approval for that, for the emergency access to be the second access, because we are over 100 units. Okay. We also have a specific approval request for a cul-de-sac exceeding 800 feet in length. As you can see, we don't actually have a cul-de-sac on this site, but we don't have any cross-connections right now, right? We have no ability currently to connect to the east or to the west. And we didn't want to run our road through the wellens. And so, for that reason, it does function as a cul-de-sac, and so staff asked us to, to make that request, and, and so we are doing that. We have included a stipulation related to that specific approval, and basically what it says is, at the time of FSP, we either have to make that connection to the east to provide for an access point there, or we need to provide for a turnaround location within the site. So, we will do one of those two things at FSP. This project meets all of the buffering requirements for the county, roadway buffer, perimeter buffering, and the applicant is also providing on the west, eight-foot privacy fencing on the, to the west where it doesn't conflict with the wetland area. So, we can't put the fence through the wetland, but otherwise, an eight-foot privacy fence to the west. Project is also meeting concurrency requirements for traffic that has already been reviewed. And there are, the, the Creekside Project is under construction right now. That includes safety and access improvements on County Road 675. So, those are underway right now related to that project. They're going to benefit this project as well. That concludes our presentation, but we're respectfully requesting your recommendation of approval and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant at this point? Do, who's the home builder of what's going on out there now?
KB Home is building, yeah. KB is doing the Creekside Project.
Just curious. Is there, but there's been no sales, correct? Or have there been sales?
Sales of the individual units?
Yeah.
No.
My question is, those two interneighborhood ties, if there's no notice to owners to those people buying out there now, they're going to be upset at some point. So, maybe we should think about that.
Understood.
Because they'll be, well, no one told me, and then they'll be yelling at me.
Right.
Okay. Any, any questions for applicant?
I just had one. The road that's on the north side closest to the wetlands and upland, those two access points, kind of, are not the foundation property, and with all some things that would be-
That's correct, yeah.
Something shows up there, you're-
Yes.
And you have 108 units-
That's right.
Past the point of no return?
Yes.
Okay. So, you're getting special dispensation from the county for that.
That is the specific approval for the two means of access. Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Staff?
Laura Gonzalez with Development Services Department, and I have been sworn. I agree with the applicant's presentation, and I would like just to emphasize some of the aspect of the proposal. I have more or less the same graphics. Okay. The proposed development is compatible with the existing trend of agricultural land that is transforming into suburban residential development and mixed-use subdivision that occur from east, from west to east in the county. The requested PDR zoning district aligns with the zoning of the adjacent single-family subdivision that Creekside at Rutland Ranch, as well as other planned communities nearby. Parcels to the south maintain their A zoning district with single-family use on larger lots. This is the preliminary site plan, and three specific approval have been requested. The first one is to reduce the secondary front yard for corner lots from 20 feet to 15 feet. No driveway or garage phase will be permitted along the 15-foot secondary front yard. The second specific approval is to allow the second means of access as an emergency access only. These emergency access will serve both subdivisions, allowing the fire, EMS, and police to reach these communities in case that is required. And also, it will allow- And also, it will allow residents to be safely evacuated in case of the main entrance is blocked. And the third, specific approval is to allow the Street A that will function like a cul-de-sac to exceed the 800 feet in length, that is the maximum length allowed in the Land Development Code. The applicant explained that the situation is that the existing two interneighborhood ties, the, the proposed to, interneighborhood ties do not connect to any existing or approved, approved plan development. And for this reason, the Street A functions like a cul-de-sac with a length of 1700 feet. So this is the reason they are requesting and they are proposing that if at time of the final site plan, access or emergency access connection is not possible and the interneighborhood tie to the east, an emergency turnaround will be provided to facilitate a three-point turnaround movement of a fire truck. I think that Denise wants to clarify some.
So the stipulation that we got from the applicant came in kind of late and I did talk to-
County attorney's going to want to know whether or not you've been sworn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Denise Greer for staff and I have been sworn.
I can see her reading it. Can read my mind and that is so scary.
Yeah. I've been here a long time. I know exactly what you're thinking. Ms. Greer, continue.
But after the stipulation came in that they proffered for the emergency access or the turnaround option, I did get with James Crutchfield, our deputy director of public safety and EMS, and he does have some concerns regarding that. I would like the applicant to address where that emergency access would be. It's off property and they would have to have an agreement, is my understanding, with the property owner, to have that emergency access. And we are also concerned with the, the two areas to the left that are circled in red. We have no guarantee when those neighborhood connections will come in. So that's a concern of ours. And as you know, sometimes those interneighborhood ties get put on the plan but never get connected to. So we do have concerns, concerns there, but I will let them speak a little bit more to their emergency access, which I believe would be a better option than the turnaround because it does get you back to a couple of different roadways that could be taken.
Yeah. I mean, we, we'd have to assume that that, because north is that way. We'd have to assume that the east and west neighborhood connectors never happen. And then what do we do? And my, while I have you, so there's 108 units and we're doing a special approval to allow that, correct?
Right. Because it's just over 100. So technically, you need two means of access for over 100, but it's-
But it's capped at 108.
Yes.
Is that really a number? Because five years from now, if the market turns bad and they want to come in and rezone or split lots, because I've, we've split lots in the past and the 108 becomes 137, but it's 108.
I'll let Laura address that.
Right. And if it isn't, then it will be by the time it meets the board.
The number of dwelling units that are proposed is 108, yes.
Yeah, I know that.
Mm-hmm.
But three years from now, when the market turns, like it did last, no shrugging of the shoulders. So somewhere, we're going to cap it at 108, not 109 or 137.
But they, they would have to come back to the board in case they, they would like to increase their number of units.
Because it's a PSP.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else for staff?
Okay. I, I, may I continue? The positive aspect.
Good.
Okay.
Anything else you need to get on the record? Anything else that needs to get on the record?
I am, I haven't finished my presentation.
Go ahead.
Okay. The request is consistent with the nearby development patterns of the agricultural zone and land transitioning to planned development residential, as I showed in the previous slide. 51% of the open space exceeds the code requirements. Public facilities are either in place or planned to serve the development. Negative aspects, the wetland impacts are proposed and mitigation will be accomplished through onsite wetland enhancement or contiguous wetland creation. Potential noise, dust and others due to adjacent active agricultural use. So PSP shows a 20-foot roadway buffer and a 15-foot greenbelt buffer that provides separation. The wetland mitigation and flood play, flood plain compensation area creates a natural barrier from agricultural land to the north and notice to buyer shall be included in the declaration of covenant and restriction informing of these agricultural uses. The proposed interneighborhood ties do not connect to any existing or approved development. Notice to buyer shall inform the presence of interneighborhood ties, which will connect to future roadways and the stipulation A7 that has been proffered by the applicant will ensure that if access or emergency access connection is not possible and the, at the interneighborhood tie to the east, an emergency turnaround will be provided to facilitate a three-point turnaround movement of a fire truck. This basically concludes my presentation. Other than the specific approval and the concerns that we have with the, the connect, interneighborhood connections, the project complies with the Land Development Code.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right, we'll open the public comment portion. Is anyone in the public that would like to come forward? I thought, figured you were sitting here for this one.
The wheels of government run slowly and clumsily some days.
I know. I had to go out and move my car because it was like, man, I'm going to be last on the list and here I am.
Please remember a couple of things. Whatever you show to us will have to stay with us. It will be, it'll be available for you at the board meeting. Please state your name, whether or not you've been sworn and county resident.
My name is Wendy Roland and no, I am not sworn.
Okay.
I came in late.
Is there anyone else that came in late looking in the background? No?
Again, my name is Wendy Roland and I am a lifelong Manatee County resident, born and raised. My property, I almost wish you'd put those images back up there, that would help me. I live directly to the west of this proposed development and I think Mr. Rudicel made some of my arguments for me. I am the negative odor and dust people because of the livestock that I have, the life that I have chose to live out there with the property, the animals. And it has been my home and my sanctuary for over 20 years. This is a representation in the front of what I look out on now.
It will, Ms., ma'am, ma'am.
This is some of wildlife.
It'll help also if you put it up on the, somebody give her some help on the-
Whatever.
No, you can put it on the, you can put it on the table over there and then they can do it on camera.
In fact, when I got in the car this morning, I doubted whether I would make it or not and then my grandson properly, promptly looked at that and said, "Dubai, I sure do like the picture of that eagle." And I thought, you know, I have to go. So here I am. But that is what I look at now. This is what I will be looking at very soon. This is the Creekside development that is underway and that borders my driveway heading out to 675. I have heard several people speak this morning about compatibility. This is the definition of incompatibility. This 108 proposed homes will be sat down in the middle of many, many home sites that are multiple acres, that are large, and with a lot of these stipulations that he brought up are going to be problems. I know that the majority of this property will be stripped of the trees, the scrubs, the habitats for the wildlife, and I know that he has shown a representation of how much of it will be retained. As wetland and buffer, I think that should speak for itself, that that property has always retained water, has always been a tributary to the Gamble Creek system and it has provided habitat for all the wildlife that is out there, much more than just what I have represented in those pictures. My other concern, and this one is kind of heartbreaking, is for this single entry that they are showing off of 675 going back into this residence. When you look at this particular picture, that road looks very straight. It looks like a no-brainer. It's not a problem.
Ms. Wendy?
Yes.
You can use the camera where you put the, the other visuals. You can kind of lay that down there and then the camera will follow your visual. Flip it around. That camera will be your friend.
Thank you.
Yep.
I appreciate that. Looks pretty straight. If you have ever been out there, 675 is not a straight road. There are long, large, blind curves, double yellow lines. There is no shoulder. This is a two-lane rural road. And from the entry point to this neighborhood, just slightly to the east and less than two miles to the west, there have been six fatalities in the last eight years. They have all been a result of going off the road with no shoulder, overcorrecting, and then coming back onto 675 with deadly results. The most recent one was a dump truck that overcorrected, came back onto the road and hit another vehicle head-on, killing the three occupants of that vehicle. You are talking about the safety of thousands of drivers on this road every single day. I don't think it's unreasonable for us to expect better preparation, better planning and some improvements prior to putting 108 homes back there on 53 acres. If I could ask for nothing else, I would please ask that we make some changes to this road, street or speed reduction signs as you approach this area of what's ahead of you. And I don't, it's going to be directly in front of my driveway. I am going to pull out every morning into a turn lane on this rural road with no shoulders. This is the last image that I have. And this one breaks my heart. This is what I pulled out heading to work directly after I pulled out of my driveway. These were the millings and the tree trimming that was occurring shortly after the death of those three people. And that went from approximately my driveway down to Jim Davis Road and then it stopped. But they were lined up there doing that for the better part of that day. I think this is a huge comment on the dangerous conditions on this road and for all the traffic that it would be anticipated with this new development. I hope that you will think about these things that are not in place yet to support this kind of development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do you want these images?
Yeah, yeah. All that's-
Very much.
There you go.
That's that. Do you need that?
Everything that was shown.
Thank you very much.
Is, is there anyone else in the public that would like to come forward and speak for or against this item? Anyone in the public? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public comment portion. Do we have any staff closing comments? Is, is there, is this, is there any of this in the floodplain or is it all just? And maybe that's better for the applicant to respond to, Ms. Greer, if you'd rather? All right, no, no, any questions for staff?
What about upgrades on the road, I guess?
None? No, no county, no county planned upgrades to 675? It's all right, I already lost the over/under. It was 11:32, so it doesn't matter.
Mr. Galliano with Traffic Engineering is approaching the podium to respond.
Denise Greer for staff. The image on the screen is the FEMA floodmate. There we go. The FEMA flood map. Right in the middle, right where it says, I believe it says Gamble, Gamble Creek, she's kind of got her arrow going around. That is their property, I believe. If I got that zeroed in there. So that is the, the floodplain. So any, I'll let them speak to this, but any impacts that they make in the floodplain will have to be compensated for and I don't know if they've done those calculations, but I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Nelson Galliano Transportation Planning and I have been sworn. Two important or three important items on this project. The first one is the posted speed on State Route, State, County Route 675 is 55 miles per hour. This is high in a rural cross-section, it means with ditches. And that is one important thing because safety, speed is a critical item for safety. Unfortunately, our regulation regarding the traffic impact analysis is silent regarding safety. It means safety has not been analyzed in the traffic impact analysis. It means this is not part of what we have. Regarding the, the road in the, that is the, that is our map series five. Here, here is the rootland, State Road 675. And more or less, that is the location of, of the project. And you see, we have a six-lane divided in the 20, 2045 Lone Ranch Transportation Plan. And this facility, the rural character that we have today will disappear in the future with a six-lane divided roadway. That is what I have here for this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me?
So when will it, when will it become a three-lane road?
When the budget allows.
It's probably not even, even in CIP at this point, is it?
No.
No.
I won't see it.
I won't see it. Okay. All right. Any other questions for, I think we closed public comment, correct? Yes?
And Mr. Galliano, if you could provide that map to, thank you.
Any other questions for staff or any staff closing comments? Applicant closing comments?
I'm going to start briefly and then I'm going to hand it off to our team just to touch on a couple of things that were raised. I guess the first one is the emergency access and the question about that. You know, we were leaving open, because we don't know what's going to happen in the future. We don't know what the conditions will be when this project comes in for PSP. So if there is the potential to get an emergency access there, you know, that's why we provided for that as an option. I mean, we recognize a need to be stabilized base. We'd have to have an easement and things like that. We didn't include those in the stip, but we can work on that if that's the concern between now and the board. I can, I can bring Andrew Island up here. He can talk about the, the turnaround because we, we do have a, a plan that, that shows where that turnaround would be if we end up using the turnaround. And he can talk about the floodplain compensation that's being provided for on the site if, if the commission would like to hear that. We also do have a, a slide that shows the access and safety improvements that are being constructed now with the Creekside project. Some turn lanes that are being added for, you know, dedicated right and lefts out on County Road 675. So that is something that we can, we can touch on quickly as well, so. Oh, yeah. Could we, could we pull the slides back up and we'll, and you want to? Oh, these, that's the turn lanes. That's the turnaround.
Good afternoon. For the record, Andrew Island with Langen Engineering. I'm the engineer of record and I have been sworn. So I think in no particular order, to the first, one of the questions was regarding the stipulation and how we would provide the stipulated turnaround provision midway down this long run in the event that at time of final site plan- in the event that, at time of final site plan approval, we have not been able to connect to the adjacent property to the east. So that will be, we're proposing to provide that with a standard hammerhead turnaround. It's fairly common, you see them around the area, but it would all, it would meet NFPA, International Fire Code standards, and it would be subject to approval of the fire district. This would be located, I don't know at this scale of how, if it's, how well it can be seen, but as you make your way down this relatively long, straight road, you see the wetland that you pass on the left-hand side of the road, we're proposing to locate it just after the wetland. So it puts it roughly halfway down the total, down the total distance before you get to the next provision to turnaround.
Mr. Island, I think there's a cursor kind of floating, is that cursor in an accurate place where you're describing, does it match what you're saying?
No, it is not.
Okay, just trying to.
Who's, do I?
Make sure that everyone's kind of on the same page.
Yes. That location being highlighted now is, is the proposed location for the turnaround. And there in that inset at the top of the page, you see a little bit of a blow up of what that, what that turnaround physically looks like. And then what you're seeing there is a truck, fire truck movement that has been analyzed to show that a fire truck can successfully use that to make a simple three-point turn. I believe the other two issues that were raised were floodplain. And then Denise, I might actually have you come back and clarify what your issue, you wanted me to clarify what the second means of access was. But while she pulls up a graphic for that potentially with regard to floodplain, as you saw, there is a good, a good bit of floodplain concentrated at the northern limits of the site. And because of that, we have actually taken the engineering analysis a lot farther than we would to, to get an applicant to this level, a preliminary site plan level. So we've already done a preliminary analysis, and that analysis is what drove the floodplain compensation area and stormwater pond sizing that we are showing on the current plan. So that now, that analysis is not final, but it is potentially 85% of the way there. We've spent a great deal of effort doing that. And, and as we did on the, the project that is being referenced repeatedly that is currently under construction, I was the engineer of record for that as well. And as we did with that project, we will both have to follow Manatee County's normal criteria of, of providing at least cup-for-cup floodplain compensation, just meaning we provide at least as much storage back as we, as we fill in, as we displace. And additionally, because this is in one of Manatee County's modern watershed studies, we will also have to run the watershed model, which is a much better tool. Rather than just saying, we provided equivalent volumes, we hope everything works out, as we did in the engineering community for 30 or 40 years. We actually have to use the study that drives the FEMA maps, and we will have to show analytically that we don't cause impacts that are adverse off-site. So we have to meet both those standards, in addition to reducing the peak discharge rate by 50%.
Right, and so you're using the current studies that the floodplains have been updated recently?
Correct, correct, this is an area of.
This is the newest information available to anybody.
Yeah, these, this watershed study is less than three years old, I believe.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Denise Greer for staff again, and just because it's hard to see the cursor on there, I pulled out the paper copy, so if we could use the, the camera. So Andrew, if you could talk about the emergency access in this area here that, that you're planning on building, and then the option to come up here and then come around, I thought you had an option.
All right, so I just want to highlight the, you have a pen or? Pen will work better than my chubby fingers. So, let me step back for a moment, let's, let's zoom back out at the 30,000-foot view. The, where my pen is circling now, that is the previously approved and under construction Creekside at Rutland Ranch project. Okay, so our primary means of access, our only normal, let's say that, means of access is to connect to, is to connect to this roadway stub provided from Creekside at Rutland Ranch Development. Our base proposal, this is not a matter of a stipulation or any negotiation, this is not on the fly. Our proposal has been consistent through the application process to get to this point today, that our second means of access will be emergency-only. And it will be down the eastern edge of the Creekside project under construction. So we will be constructing a new 20-foot-wide emergency access, except, built to specifications acceptable to Manatee County Public Works, Manatee County Public Safety, Manatee County Fire. And that will be approved as part of the final site plan construction process. But we are committing that, to that now, that is a part of the base proposal. The discussion today, as staff mentioned, fairly late in the process, there was some additional concerns raised that they were viewing this all as one effective cul-de-sac, and that they wanted some additional mitigation for that. So to that end, today, we, we have negotiated with staff a stipulation that at title, at time of final site plan, we will either provide an inner neighborhood tie, that this inner neighborhood tie at the northern limits of the project will connect to something viable on the eastern property that would allow you back out to Rutland Ranch. And at such time, if such a connection is not available, cannot be achieved, the mitigation for staff's issues will be the aforementioned three-point turnaround hammerhead to break up this one long run of road and provide emergency vehicles the ability to turn around.
You, you mentioned only to the east, what if a neighborhood tie is available to the west? Okay, well, there's a check between zero and a billion dollars that will buy your property. You mentioned only to the east, so if there's a neighborhood tie available to the west, that doesn't count, that's what you just said. No, no.
Yeah, I don't have complete clarity on the question. If, if there was an opportunity, yeah.
It is, is that if you can connect either to the east or the west, then you've accomplished that. You just said only to the east.
I think that's just because we anticipate that that would, is the more likely potential connection. But you're right, we should probably allow the, the potential of either.
Otherwise, the west doesn't count.
Right.
Thank you.
And then the only other thing, do you want us to go through the, the access and safety improvements on 675 that are, that are being done right now? Is that something that the commission would like to hear?
Well, some, someone should, whether the staff, since it's, the staff's work, or.
Why don't you give it a shot and see what you have to say?
Yeah, let's see if staff agrees with you.
Okay, yeah, let us take a shot.
Should be fun.
If we can pull the presentation slides back up, we have a. Scale's not great on this either, but.
My eyes are not any better.
Yeah, once again, Andrew Island with Langen Engineering. So to reiterate, our primary access is via connection to the Creekside project already under construction. As such, we are not proposing a new full access to Rutland Road. Our traffic study has already progressed, and we've already demonstrated that the turn lanes that are already proposed to be added to Rutland Road to serve the project under construction are sufficient to accommodate the additional trips from the project before you today. So just to highlight what those improvements are, we're adding, we're adding a westbound, northwestbound along Rutland Road, right deceleration lane, right turn lane at our project entrance to serve only the project entrance. And we are creating, and we are widening Rutland Road as necessary to accomplish the addition of a left turn into our project. So a left turn lane for our project entrance for projects, for, excuse me, for cars that are moving southwest along Rutland Road and wish to make a left into our project entrance. So there will be a left turn lane added that currently does not exist today. In addition to that, for the entire length of our roadway improvements, this entire frontage along which we are constructing turn lanes and the tapers necessary to get back to the existing pavement widths, we are adding six-foot shoulders on either side of the roadway. So that, a lot of discussion on that today, that the current roadway lacks true shoulders. So we are proposing a four-foot paved shoulder outside the travel lane and an additional two-foot unpaved, for a total of six, six feet of shoulder to allow, allow for vehicles to recover if they do leave the travel lane.
And how many units are in the Creekside development? Since you did that?
95.
Okay, so we're talking about 200 approximately residential traffic count, whatever that institution of traffic ridiculousness is. And this is gonna be adequate for all that?
Correct.
Does staff agree?
Mr. Galliano, let the record reflect, he was waving, nodding his head in the affirmative, but I would prefer that Mr. Galliano state that on the record.
Again, Nelson Galliano Transportation Planning, and yes, we will have about, in total, 200 dealing units, and which equals more or less to 200 PM trips during the peak hour. I wanna, I wanna clarify these, the turn lanes accessing this development. Because of the speed, again, speed, this is a critical factor in the design, in the roadway design. And 55 miles per hour requires long deceleration lanes, especially for the southbound, for the left-on lanes, because this is, this is very common to stop before turning left. This is a safety maneuver that everyone used to do. For that reason, this, this turn lane is longer, and it's, um, 500 feet, including 50 foot regarding, regarding the FDOT design manual. And the right turn lane is a little bit shorter. It doesn't have really a queue, a queue to store action vehicles, and that's the reason the, the right turn lane is 455.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we know if there's any active ag in the area? Are they growing anything out there that you need to notice to owners about pesticides, et cetera? I don't think there's any active tomato, pickle farming, or?
Yeah, I don't, there's a lot of pickle farming out there, but.
Yeah, not to our knowledge, and our initial submittal, we detailed the existing uses of the surrounding properties as we were able to determine them.
Okay. We've heard from staff, we've heard from applicant. Any questions, any comments, any discussions? Chair, entertain a motion, if anybody feels the.
I, I just would like to say that this, this is the common malady of where we are today in the thing, is that we have residents that have been there a long time, they're homesteaded, they have, they're vested in it. And, and yet, the progress is coming. And so unfortunately, this is kind of where we end up. And, and so, I'm disappointed that it probably won't be the way you like it, but I'm, I'm gonna vote in favor of approving this, so.
I think the second means of egress is still a problem on this. So I think it's a little too soon, so I won't vote for it.
Well, second means of egress certainly is an issue. But, all right, we have a motion to approve and a second, so we may vote now? Motion passes three to one with Mr. DeLezline voting against, as he mentioned, for the second means of access as the issue. All right, I believe that wraps up our discussions today, we are adjourned.
Thank you.